February 2020, school committee meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to read the Danvers Public Schools' mission statement. "The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence." This meeting is being broadcast in Danvers Community Access Television. Is there anyone else in the audience recording tonight's meeting? No? Okay, thank you. Items of interest from the superintendent?
All set this evening, thank you.
Items from the school committee? Items from the community? Okay. Information from the student representative?
Hello, good evening.
Cynthia?
So Max couldn't be here tonight, or he's running late. But I will continue and read for all of them. So at Great Oak, they have been working in their writing workshop. The first graders are working on their opinion writing and writing reviews to convince their readers. They've been editing their work to include a strong conclusion that restates their opinion, shares a reason to support their opinion, and then tells the reader to do something. One student's conclusion reads, "Bluebirds are the most beautiful birds because they are so blue and they always have eggs. You should go to the woods to see them and watch them in your backyard." I think that's very well written. Last Friday morning before school vacation, the district literacy coach, Ms. Demmers, hosted a Friday Friends Read session before school, and the students were invited to come into school beginning at 7:45 to read until 8:15. It was a wonderful and calming way to start the day, and they look forward to having the next one in March. At Highlands, the kindergarten students finished their reading unit called Bigger Books, Bigger Reading Muscles, and the fourth grade students finished their reading unit on nonfiction Extreme Weather. And as a celebration of learning, the fourth grade students visited the kindergarten students and they read winter-themed books to each other. As they continue to revamp and revisit their positive behavior interventions and support system, the whole school will participate in round robin of nine areas of the school: recess, morning arrival, bathroom, hallway, assemblies, cafeteria, and the office/ nurses area, dismissal, and the bus, and are explicitly reviewing what is expected in each area. The review will model what it looks and sounds like to be responsible, respectful, and safe using the PBIS rubrics for each area. Every student will have a PBIS passport and will receive a stamp for participating in the review of each area with their positive expectations. And then we'll go home and then review with their parents. Riverside, the fourth graders are currently working with Mrs. Silva, the school's social worker, on understanding gender stereotypes. Students particularly enjoy studying gender stereotyping in toys and are becoming experts in recognizing marketing schemes that promote harmful stereotypes. These lessons have stirred up inquisitive conversations and have been eye-opening for the students. A continuation of the lessons happen in the fifth grade as the fifth graders dig deeper into courageous conversations. During their SEL blocks, students will have conversations about culture, race, stereotype, and discrimination. At Smith, in the reading workshops, first graders at Smith have been learning and applying strategies and habits for solving hard words. These strategies include checking the picture, looking at all the word parts, doing a triple check, crashing the word parts together to understand the meaning, and rereading it slowly, doing their best to say the word and thinking about what it might mean. February has been a month for the Smith community to give back. Fifth graders Brooke Corso and Nayla and Laura, I'm sorry if I said the names wrong, have organized a loose change collection for the Australian Red Cross. These funds will support the relief efforts of the recent bushfires in Australia, and the Red Cross provides necessities to family affected and items like joey pouches, bird nests, bat wraps, and possum and bird boxes to misplaced animals. The collection will run through the end of February, and thus far, the Smith community has had an overwhelming amount of support in this initiative. At Thorpe, the front hallway at Thorpe has recently been updated with a new 50-digital display monitor. This new technology enables them to make electronic announcements about upcoming events, student birthdays, the lunch menu, and display pictures of a wide array of student learning activities that happen throughout the day. In addition, recently Thorpe's PAC has purchased new tables and chairs for the Makerspace area and around the area of the learning commons. This flexible furniture will help to facilitate small and large groups' learning experiences for the students as they utilize the STEM materials and technology that has been made available to them. They are very grateful for the continued support and generosity of the PAC. At the middle school HRMS, the monthly Project HAWK meetings, students, staff, and, oh, students and staff have explored the social-emotional learning competencies of social awareness, the ability to take perspective and emphasize with others who may be different from themselves. Students explore different scenarios and explore different ways that they could support peers going through difficult social situations. On February 11th, the sixth graders sponsored the first annual HRMS Bingo Night in support of Water for South Sudan, an organization which works to provide safe drinking water in South Sudan. After reading the book A Long Walk to Water in the ELA classes, students were moved by the story of Salva Dut, one of the lost boys of Sudan, who went on to become a champion for the cause of clean drinking water and founded the organization Water for South Sudan. The HRMS sixth grade students and staff have earned a total of $3,600 in support of the Iron Giraffe Challenge, named for the term that the South Sudanese use to refer to the drilling rig in A Long Walk to Water. And here at the high school, on Valentine's Day, DHS held the annual Senior Serving Seniors Event, complete with performances by our band and chorus, and they would like to thank the class of 2020 and the class advisors, Ms. Waldron and Mr. Gable, for putting together this wonderful event. Thanks to all the senior citizens who came out to visit us. Students in the early college pilot, or early college pilot course made their first campus to the North Shore Community College this month. Students were taking a course called Understanding Higher Education and Career Pathways and will earn both college and high school credit. And they would also like to wish the girls' basketball team best of luck to their first roundoff playoff game in Dixbury tonight. Sorry, that was a lot.
Great information, thank you Cynthia. Any questions for Cynthia? Thank you very much. Information from the superintendent?
Thank you. This evening, we have our Danvers Pride presentation. We're going to begin with that. We have inclusion with athletics in our mid-year accomplishments. As part of our strategic plan are the three major pieces for this evening. So I'd like to first to welcome our Highlands School community here, and they have their, members of their fifth grade classes to present about what happens with social-emotional learning at Highlands. Thank you, welcome. I told them there'd be 10 people tonight. They're wondering why I didn't quite tell the truth. They're going to do great. All right. So, good evening. It is my pleasure to have a team of fifth grade students here to present for our Danvers Pride presentation. As you know, the elementary team worked diligently to build schedules for all five elementary schools. Through the work at Smith School last year with the trauma-sensitive schools' professional development, it became apparent that a soft landing for all students first thing in the morning is very beneficial. From this work, the elementary team built time into the schedule for social-emotional learning each morning. It is a time where the entire building is engaged in an SEL activity in every classroom, and the reading specialists, special education teachers, and teacher aides join in classrooms at this time. The specialists join the fifth grade students daily, which has been integral in the success of the block. The fifth grade team of teachers plan their SEL lessons with the specialists, which helps the skills taught to carry over. You will now hear from our fifth grade students on their perspective of SEL this school year. I hope you enjoy.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Bakarano.
My name is Andrew Dos Santos from Miss Brugrill's fifth grade class at Highlands Elementary School.
Thank you for inviting us to school committee tonight to hear about all of the great things happening in our school. Tonight, we are going to talk about a very special time in our classroom that happens each morning called social-emotional learning, or SEL. In our classroom, we are learning about our emotions through the zones of regulation curriculum. During this school year, Zones of Regulation has given us strategies to become more aware and independent in controlling emotions and impulses and improving our abilities to problem-solve conflicts.
The Zones help us to identify and name our feelings. It helps us to understand how our behavior impacts those all around us and what tools I can use to manage emotions. We have been working on creating our own invisible toolboxes throughout the school year. These toolboxes help us inside and outside of school. We have feelings or emotions that are uncomfortable to us. Some things that we have talked about this year are sensory supports, calming techniques, and thinking strategies.
One strategy that I find most useful is identifying the inner coach versus the inner critic. I learned how to change my thinking so that I give all the power to the inner coach who helps me with positive self-talk.
One that I find most useful is the lazy eight breathing. I trace a sideways eight and practice breathing in and out when I feel stressed or anxious.
Hello, my name is Riley Shepherd. I'm in Mr. Cox's class. We have been talking about anti-bullying. Our main focus has been on the definition of bullying. There are three pieces for it to be bullying: repeated, intentional, and power imbalance. Repeated means when something is done over and over. Also, intentional means when something is done on purpose. But power imbalance is when there is a clear difference in power between the bully and the target.
Hello, my name is Kendall Murphy. We have really focused on talking about power imbalance. We did role-playing to experience how bullying feels on both sides. We had to identify the different power and balances that occurred in the different role-plays that our class acted out. We had a lot of fun with it. Some of the power balances we talked about are social strength, like popularity and having strong leadership skills, physical strength, size, age, numbers, like the group members, and mental strength.
Hello, my name is Allen Gomez in Mr. Sett's, from Mr. Sett's class. In my class, we share how we are feeling and what's going on in our lives. We check in how we are feeling on Mondays. We spread out index cards with different emotions on them. Each fifth grader chooses an emotion and shares how they are feeling at the start of the week. We take time to share why we are feeling that way. This may include some things that we did over the weekend. On Fridays, we check out as a group. We share some things that we enjoyed during the week or some things we are looking forward to. This helps us get, gets to know our classmates and become a caring community that feels connected.
Hello, my name is Nate from Mrs. Duset's class. We also play different games to learn about each other and ourselves. During these activities, we interact with our classmates, show each other respect and support, have fun, and follow rules. One of the games that we play is called hog call. During this activity, each person chooses one half of a compound word, such as gold or fish. We form two lines facing each other, and with our eyes closed, we call out half of the compound word. We listen to our classmates and try to find our partner without opening our eyes. After activities, we turn and talk about how we are feeling during the activity and how it connects to social-emotional learning. During hog call, we have to listen to each other and be safe with our bodies and consider it if we accidentally bump into someone. You take a risk when closing your eyes, and you have to trust each other. You feel kind of silly during the activity and worry that you might be the last one without a partner. We talked about our feelings. We talked about how feeling silly, embarrassed, or worried are normal feelings that everyone experiences, and it's okay to feel that way. These activities help us develop our social skills, like listening, following directions, practicing self-control, and working together.
Hello, my name is Vivian Loughlin. Each week, our entire fifth grade gathers together along with our teachers, teacher aides, specialists, social worker, and principal to participate in a community meeting. This meeting helps us build relationships and learn about our peers. One part of our meeting allows for everyone in the room to share news and announcements from their lives. Teachers share important information about school, like student council, chorus, or academic areas. Students are allowed to share anything from their own lives that we can celebrate or provide more support of.
Hello, my name is Natalia Postino. Another part of our meeting is participating in a mindful moment. Sometimes these are breathing activities or yoga movements. This is a time where we are exposed to and learn tools to help us manage our emotions and feelings. We are lucky enough to go to specials after this meeting. These mindful activities are often a great way to help us get ready to start our day with a specialist teacher in the building. Specialists are also in our community meeting, and it helps them carry over skills that we work on as a fifth grade team.
Hello, my name is Julia Lambo. Once a month, three students, or maybe four, are recognized for being exemplary citizens. These citizens do not have to be straight-A students. Students can be recognized for many different reasons. Some reasons that the students are recognized for: role model behavior in class, most improved, best effort, hardworking, good friend to others, being an exemplary role model for the school. Thank you for coming to our social-emotional learning presentation. We hope that you enjoyed hearing about what we do and try some of these activities at home, like deep breathing and relaxation techniques. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all did a wonderful job this evening, so professional. I cannot believe you're all fifth graders and moving on next year to the middle school, but you all, wonderful job. Any questions from the school committee? Eric?
I would say same thing, great job. I don't think I could have done that when I was in the fifth grade. Everything was in black and white when I was in the fifth grade. I just love to see what's happening. I think I've said to a lot of people in the, in the years that I've been involved in the schools, which is a long time now, the biggest change I've seen is the greater emotional needs that students are bringing to school with them. And to be ready to learn, they have to be able to address those. And as a school committed to helping them learn, we have to help them do that. So I appreciate what's going on at Highlands certainly, and all the schools, in an effort to really get the kids ready to learn and address what's happening, maybe outside the classroom. So, thank you.
Jeff?
I hope everybody is feeling green right now because you all did a fantastic job. And so, if you're not, you all looked great and sounded great. So, thank you very much. Well done, thanks.
Dave?
Great job, everyone. I liked how everyone was reading along and you guys were all supporting each other. That's really important as part of a community, so great job.
Arthur?
I agree with that, but I have a question. Nate, you back there somewhere? Can you come up? Can you come up to the podium again?
He's going to blue.
I need to know more about this hog call. Like, are you all yelling things at the same time and smashing into each other and everything? Describe for me what, what really happens during hog call?
So, you keep your card, and so you keep it in one hand, and you have like your other hand out, so like you know, well, you don't know your surroundings, but you know if you hit somebody.
Do you wear pads?
Can Mr. Scarmus come next week and play with you?
Call me when the next hog call is, I'll be over. Thanks, guys, it was really good.
No, thank you very much. Again, great job. I'm glad to see that all of this that you're doing in school every week, all year, it's wonderful, and I appreciate the teachers and the principals and all the staff that help the students, and I appreciate the students for participating in it, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks to all our families that came to support our students also. So, we will take a moment for transition so our students are able to go home and hopefully read tonight too, to be ready for to school for tomorrow. And thank you to our families.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, Paula. I know. So cute.
That's a brand-new one, huh?
No, there's not, no worries. Congrats.
Oh, she's adorable.
She's not, she's not.
She's not ready for a hog call yet.
Not hog call, no hog call.
Pretty soon. I can give you access.
Okay, I'll do it, let me, I can.
My mouse is not working, my trackpad's not working. Have to go with touchscreen.
I don't have touchscreen.
Can you already see it?
I guess so, because I tried to in that.
Thank you, Paula.
Nothing happens.
Great, thank you. So our next item on our agenda is inclusion with athletics, and I would like to have introduce Mr. St. Pierre, Mr. Travis, and two students that they brought from Danvers High School, so welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Give a quick update. We were very fortunate this year to offer a unified basketball program. It's the first time we've done this. It's very new. It's a new offering from Special Olympics in conjunction with the MIAA, which is our governing body, with the idea solely of inclusion and getting kids involved in sports participation and having the benefit of being on a team and representing your high school. So this program, we were very eager to get it off the ground, and it was awesome. They'll talk about in a minute. But the basic gist of it is having a team that's comprised of able-bodied student athletes and then student athletes with physical and cognitive disabilities, all on the same team playing together. So it was really great to see. I think the overall participation across the state is above 80 now, which is really good for a relatively new program. It's been around a couple of years, and they have a couple of sports offerings. But this was a good sort of segue for us to get into the unified world and see what it's all about. And with that being said, it was a great offering for the athletes and the partners themselves, but there's a lot of growth to be, to be had in the next couple of years in terms of getting the word out in the community and sort of getting the student following in the school and making it a really big deal. But we got, the teams had uniforms, they had a schedule, the cheerleaders showed up and cheered them on during the games. It was really awesome for the kids. And with that, I'll let them talk a little about the experience, and then we'll take questions after.
Thank you, Mr. St. Pierre. We have one team and.
All right, so as Mr. St. Pierre mentioned, our roster was potentially open to the whole student body, but our goal here was inclusion through sports. And I think we were certainly successful at that. Some fun pictures for everybody. That's our group there with the cheerleaders. I think it was our last home game of the year. We always had a lot of students and parents and cheerleaders out there cheering us on. It was a lot of fun. So our season was about seven weeks long. Each week, we met for three days a week, usually two practices and a game. We had about five games, some road, some home. And we finished with a jamboree, which I believe was hosted by Malden. Essentially, like eight or 10 teams get together.
Essentially, like eight or 10 teams get together and everyone plays a couple of games at a time. It was a great time. So, my takeaway from all this was that I was so proud of all these guys were coming out of their comfort zone. For me, being a life skills teacher and a basketball coach, I kind of knew all these guys coming in and it was, it was a perfect marriage for me to bring them all together. And, and just, you know, now what you see is people that never knew each other saying hi in the hallways and we know each other's names and some great friendships came out of this, which I love to see. Certainly hope to see everybody coming out to some games next year. And so, we have Kevin Lennox with us tonight and Mike Goodman with us tonight. We'd be happy to open any questions that you have. And these two guys are now the two team captains for coming here tonight.
Congratulations.
Any questions?
Arthur?
So, how, how, so you had five, five games?
Right.
Five games and then a jamboree, so seven games.
And who were, what other towns have teams? Who did you play?
Malden, Beverly, PB, Lexington.
There's a bunch.
So, a lot, a lot of schools. A lot of schools. Lincoln Classical? All right. Who was the toughest team that you played?
Honestly, Malden.
Well, next year, we're gonna beat them.
That's not fair, because Malden's been at this for three years or so right now.
So, our goal next year is to beat Malden, right? Good job. Thanks, guys.
Dave?
How many students are on the team?
Uh, I think we had twelve, ten, twelve. Ten, ten athletes and six partners, I believe, total. Some people had commitment issues, but it was, it was, for the most part, fifteen or sixteen. So, they try to keep a, a good ratio on court at all times to help the kids along and make sure it's a good experience on both sides.
That's great. And in this case, was it all boys or was it coed? Coed. Excellent. That's great. I think it's great. Do you see it expanding to other sports?
Right now, my knowledge is track and field is the only other sport that they offer unified through this organization. So, that's the only one I know that's part of the MIAA. We have, we have athletes that, that compete in track and field already. So, but it's certainly something that we can discuss in the future.
Great. I think it's an awesome program. I know we work with the Special Olympics and other things throughout the year. Mr. Travis does an amazing job with his students and I just love seeing the high school students, especially being involved with the, the life skills and the special needs students and just that feeling of inclusion, you know, seems so genuine and authentic. So, whatever you're doing, you're doing a great job, so keep it up.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. You know, other sports, maybe like soccer or something else too, if you could do it. I mean, is this, this is just once a year? Is there any possibility of, you know, expanding it to a couple of times a year in the summer as well?
I think it's driven more through Special Olympics and what they're organized to offer. It's not individual by school. So, right now, the ones that they offer are the unified basketball, unified track and field. Basketball's the more popular one right now. This is, it's all very still new. Like I said, this year, there's up to 80, but I think they probably almost have that last year. So, I think they're trying to grow, but I'm sure that discussion point's always there.
Terrific. Great. Congratulations. Well done.
First of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for putting this on the agenda. I had asked for the presentation because one of my stepdaughters, Piper, played on the, on the team this year. And, you know, she would come home, "I got two in today. I got three in today." And she was happy as a kid could be. And through the course of the season also, it started out with just shooting and then she said, "Mr. Travis is teaching me to dribble now." And then I finally get the chance to see one of the games at the high school. And what I was struck by is that the, everyone goes out of their way to make this feel like a real high school game experience. There are cheerleaders in full regalia cheering. The best buddies are participating with the students. At the game I was at, there was a cheering section of probably thirty of the high school students just sitting in the bleachers cheering on the Danvers players. It was just a wonderful experience for them all. They're learning as they go through the course of the season. And I think they're learning a lot more than just about basketball too. I think they're learning about what they can do that maybe they weren't sure that they could. They're learning about teamwork. And one of the nicer things is at the end of the game, both teams together get together for a team picture. Tremendous amount of camaraderie. And I took a lot of pride in seeing not just the students on the team, but the other students, the, the regularly abled students who were on the team setting up the shots for the, the other students. You know, the, the regularly abled students make sure the ball gets up and down the court. And then they're passing it off to the other students to take the shots and maybe make rebounds. And there's a real, I mean, they're taking, you know, an hour or so of their time several times a week to work with these kids and just help them have a great experience. So, I was proud of the whole student body who came out to support the students, who participated as referees for the games, as, you know, the, the partners for the players. Really, this town should be so proud of the students, every student who was involved. And thank you for running the program, Max. I think you, you know, watching the way you coached the students and held them to a behavioral standard and helped them play as a team, I think it's one of the ways you make a difference with the students. And I really, really appreciate it as one parent and certainly as a school committee member. So, thank you. Thank you for supporting it.
And by the way, it's all about teamwork.
Teamwork, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
No, Eric did ask me about putting this on the agenda, but I had also been following on Twitter when you were playing games with other communities because it would be, you would highlight from that day's game. So, I was very interested in it. I thought it was a great, this is a great opportunity for all students. And I, again, want to thank you, Mr. Travis, Andy as well. I think it's just, it's so important that these, all students have the opportunity to play all sports. Kevin, what was your favorite part about playing basketball?
Honestly, the jamboree.
Why was that?
Because we finally won one game.
Congratulations.
Their first season.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much to our presenters and we look forward to that program growing. Okay, thank you. We're gonna make a transition to our mid-year accomplishments and have a different presentation for school committee in our community this year with our work as the finishing up in mid-part of our second year of a strategic plan and our work with the Essex County Learning Community grant that we've had, which focused, really led us with many resources with moving forward with our strategic plan. So, in just one moment, I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Wormers and our team. I think I see four up there, four from a group of really committed teacher leaders that have been working over the last two years with Mary leading this work in our district. Also in your packet, you have the mid-year accomplishments from our school improvement plans for each of our seven schools, where you will see highlights from work underneath our three pillars. So, we have safe and supportive learning communities. And looking, that was really a lot of the work with the S D L. You saw an example of that with the Highlands School Community this evening. Coherent curriculum instruction and assessment. Under that pillar is a lot of our work with the Research for Better Teaching, Skillful Teacher, the FAR cycle, coaching high-impact teaching teams, and the work that we're doing with formative assessment and giving feedback to students in their work on an ongoing basis. And our last pillar is engage, having engaged students. And looking at that, we have Makerspace, we have project-based learning, place-based learning. We've had new courses at the high school. And later in the agenda, you'll see again the Program of Studies for the Middle School with also new offerings there, our college and career pathways at the high school. And then also in early college, which in a future meeting, we'll also have a presentation about early college that has just started this year also for the school committee in our community. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Wormers and our ECLC team.
So, okay, unmuting the presentation. So, early this month, our Essex County Learning Community Grant concluded. So, we culminated in a, what they called a showcase of learning. And our whole team went to celebrate our successes with this grant and really highlight what they call bright spots. So, we decided to use this presentation today at the school committee meeting. So, I'm very fortunate today that we have five people presenting this work, but they represent a large group of people that do present it. So, when we thought about the Essex County Learning Community work, we really framed it around our Danvers Public Schools' vision from the strategic plan. So, instead of reading this vision for you, I just kind of broke it up into the three parts of that vision. And this first part was really around the social, the social emotional learning part. So, we really worked hard to put in actions that really made an inclusive community of learners, respectful of individual differences, you know, valuing everyone for their strengths and talents and challenges and really providing that welcoming environment. And then also, we worked on putting together a multi-tiered system of support to help students, support students in our coherent curriculum instruction assessment. And then we really wanted to work on the student engagement part too, so that the students really are able to achieve to their maximum capability, they're skilled communicators and problem solvers, and they really work well collaboratively and then using technology to apply their learning in authentic, real-life situations. And again, at the end, we really want them to become, you know, to achieve their definition of success. So, all that kind of framed the work we did in the ECLC committee. All these people worked together on that. So, we had, for the multi-tiered system of support, we had Tania St. Pierre, Kathy Carey, who was going to be here tonight, but she unfortunately was sick, so I'll be filling in for her slides. Christina Davro, Will Ford. And under social emotional learning, we've seen them come to present before Cindy Grady, Jeff Bartlett, and Alex Grover. And then cultural proficiency, we have Juliana Robbins and Linda Armstrong. And then we have our leadership team that kind of pulled all that work together. So, it was Rhea Plummer, Caitlin Resnick, Mary Franz, Josh Jordan, Adam Federico, Mary Tatum, and myself. So, we all comprise the larger team. And, and what's been great about these smaller teams is that, as I will say later, we've actually added more people. So, as the work grew over the years, we added more teachers to this committee. So, and administrators, so that we were really moving forward the strategic plan. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to, this is, sorry, this slide just frames what we're gonna talk about in the presentation, but I'm gonna turn it over to Will Ford. And he's gonna start the work on the multi-tiered system of supports.
So, some of the things that we were really excited to share about MTSS. And so, for anybody who doesn't know, MTSS is a tiered framework that identifies and supports at-risk students both academically and socially. So, we had several things that we were really excited to share about that. One of the first things is that our ECLC grant has driven priority challenges for district strategic plan. So, in October of 2018, we identified two priority challenges. Our first one is looking at the achievement gap existing between students with and without diverse learning needs as identified by MCAS data. From that, we decided to make a goal, and that goal is to refine the district's MTSS model to ensure that inclusive culturally responsive interventions are implemented so that all students have access to the grade-level curriculum. From there, we have two objectives where we can really see MTSS unfolding. So, the first one is to use an assessment system to gain an understanding of and take action on each student's path to achievement on grade-level standards. So, this is our already existing FAR cycle that we're incorporating into that objective. And the second one is to define and implement a multi-tiered system of support so that all students have access to grade-level curriculum. So, again, we are really excited to see that this is driven district-wide, become part of our plan there. A second thing that we were really lucky to have is our cohort attend a three-part series workshop with Judy Elliott, who's an educator of educators for MTSS. She's renowned across the nation. So, from these workshops, we were able to establish common language around MTSS and it really helped our team be able to identify target areas and on-ramps of implementation of MTSS in, again, each educational level. So, one of the things we decided to focus on is our core, core plus more, our tier-one instruction this year, being able to fortify it to make it more accessible for all learners using UDL guidelines. And UDL meaning understanding, universal design for learning, sorry. So many acronyms. So, as I said, we already have the FAR cycle. This is actually our second full year of integration of the FAR cycle in all three levels of education in, in Danvers. So, one way we wanted to look at MTSS is by using what we already have here. So, we're able to harness a successful strategy we have in place to provide more support and feedback for students. And again, the FAR, the FAR cycle is using formative assessments to collect data on whether students are meeting curriculum standards. So, again, taking something we already have and making it work instead of just trying to start anew. The last bright spot that I wanted to highlight is speaking from my position at the high school. We are excited to be starting conversations around how we can integrate this at the high school level. What we want the most is support for teachers to be able to support our students. So, we're looking at ways to begin integrating and modifying systems to accommodate all learners, potential use of existing schedule, looking at sort of what structures and strategies we already have in place. We really wanted to make sure that we're acclimating teachers to the strategies and the structures that MTSS has before we start implementing them. One thing that Judy Elliott spoke about that really spoke to us is to go slow to go fast. So, rather than blowing everything up, looking at what we already have that's really successful and triumphant and trying to integrate small things each year, rather than trying to start anew. So, by doing little pieces each year, we're able to create and continue interventions for students.
All right. Next up is Ellen Faric for the middle school. Part of our MTSS team.
So, at the middle school, kind of similar to the high school, we had the same philosophy of kind of going slow to go fast and looking at our existing structures and what we could use that was already in place to help us to implement our onboard MTSS. So, one of the biggest pieces we looked at was our existing SSR, sustained silent reading, more acronyms. That was 25 minutes in the existing schedule that was dedicated to silent reading every day. And we thought that a more effective use of time would be to sort of open that up and redefine that to what we now call the RISE block, which stands for reteaching intervention SSR for students who still choose to silently read during that time and for whom that's beneficial, or extension. And so, now teachers can sort of decide how they're going to use that 25 minutes every day. They can use it to pull a, a group of students who, based on formative assessment data, they determined that they need a little extra instruction. They need to perhaps be presented with some material in a different way because the formative assessment revealed that maybe they didn't understand it, they didn't quite master it the first time around. So, we have that opportunity to reteach or to use that time for some small group intervention or again, for small, for silent reading. And then finally, for extension, for students who have mastered the, the core curriculum and perhaps are able to go deeper. So, we use that 25 minutes now in a little different way without making any drastic changes to the schedule. Some teams have decided to just use, with our rotating schedule, you see a different group of students every day during this RISE block. So, some teams have decided to just use the students who are in front of them. If it's, you know, my D block and that's what I have during RISE block, then those are the students with whom I'm going to work today. Other teams actually kind of shuffle kids around during RISE block to determine who they're going to meet with on any given day. The other change or the other sort of first step for integrating MTSS at the middle school has been kind of changing the, the culture around data and how we use data at the middle school and becoming more data-driven in our daily decision-making rather than just using the external data from, from the MCAS to using more of our local data on a regular basis. So, every trimester, each PLC has a data analysis meeting where they have selected assessments ahead of time that they're going to analyze using protocols to make instructional decisions and then reflect on the, the success of any interventions that they've put in place for students. So, those are sort of the first steps of MTSS at the middle school.
So, I'm taking over for the elementary since Kathy Carey's unable to be with us. At the elementary level, we already had a pretty robust RTI system. So, what we had to do is switch over from the RTI to a more proactive model of the multi-tiered system of support. So, over the past years, we've really been working hard to beef up the tier-one instruction so that, the instruction that all kids will get. So, you've heard many presentations on reading workshop, writing workshop, the mathematics. So you've heard many presentations on reading workshop, writing workshop, the mathematics program foundations, and words their way. So that we've done lots of work on that, shoring that up. And we've been also a part of the, working on the FAR cycle and really looking at that form of assessment data to kind of find out how kids are doing in those programs, to make sure that they are meeting those grade-level standards. And as we've been doing that, we, like the middle school, realized that we really needed that little dedicated block of time to be able to take those interventions when needed or provide those extensions for kids if they had met those grade-level standards. So that we really worked on recommending that that IE block happened within the, the schedule. If we had that IE time, we also realized that, that we would be able to, you know, provide those interventions during that time and thus making it, making able all kids to access the Tier One instruction. Sometimes kids would get pulled out in past years of the Tier One instruction, but now all kids were included and had full access to the core instruction, would be reading workshop, writing workshop, and mathematics. So no one was getting pulled out of that. So that was, that was a major change that we made over the school year. So the last piece that we did, which is the last bullet, is we were doing beginning, middle, and end-of-year data meetings in the RTI system. And part of that change was now to start looking at data in the six-week cycle. So when we were at the beginning-year meetings and forming groups for intervention and to have, like, our Title One program, we were making check-ins after six weeks now to make sure that interventions were, you know, making, were regressing and kids were doing well, so that kids didn't wait for a whole 12 weeks before they either exited the intervention or got something different, something else that they needed. So that was pretty much what we did at the elementary level. They were kind of, they're kind of driving our MTSS right now because, like I said, we had that RTI in place already, and we were able to kind of jump ahead and move a little faster at that level. So here's the schedule, that, a picture of the schedule that we put in place. If you, all you need to see is the yellow blocks, because the yellow blocks are that 30 minutes of dedicated IE time. And that really helped us put that schedule together to really talk about that uninterrupted time in the reading workshop, writing workshop, and mathematics, where student, all students were included in the classroom. And that firm action in the FAR cycle, all were happening so that the IE time are, were being used efficiently and effectively. So that's what we did at the elementary level, and that was our multi-tiered system of support work. And now we're going to switch over to Alex Grover and Cindy and Juliana to talk about the social-emotional learning. Cindy?
Hello, everyone. Before we shift into the social-emotional learning part of this presentation, I just want to say, nothing can speak to the effectiveness and progress more than the student presentation you saw today on social-emotional learning from the Highlands students. So we'll just try to measure up here and provide a little bit of context for it, for you. So I think some of you were actually involved in this first part of the SEL Visioning Day that we had last spring. So this was sort of the first big step out of the research and the professional development that had been, had been done by the ECLC team on social-emotional learning. So as you, I think, know, this was a day of about 40 people from the community, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, students, parents. We even had, like, staff from the library, some of you guys were there. And it was just a way for us to define SEL, what we wanted to look like in our schools, discuss the research that had been done on SEL, and then develop a vision for what it was going to be in our schools. And this can just give you kind of a glimpse into one of the activities that we did that day on the SEL Visioning Day. It's our bumper sticker activity where each group, as we split up into different, like, sort of cohorts within our 40 participants, participants, came up with a saying that could be a vision for SEL for our district. As you can see, the different ones on there. I think the one that we ended up deciding on was working together for our students, and you've probably seen that on some of the swag that we've been fortunate to get this year, like the grocery bags and pens and things like that. So that itself really just speaks to one of the aspects of SEL that's important in terms of it being implemented in our district, which is finding a common language so that everybody's on the same page with the rollout of it. And so the next aspect that came from our SEL work as a steering committee and ECLC team was our big district opening day, which Juliana is going to talk about in a second. But just to give you the big picture of what that was, on the first day of school, as I'm sure some of you were there as well, we had all the staff of the district come together, and this was sort of the big rollout of SEL and its terminology. And everybody was here. We had different colored shirts for each school, and we dove into what SEL was in terms of the five competencies. And then we went into breakout sessions, and I'm going to kick it to Juliana here, who's going to do it.
Don't give too much away. So for each breakout session, there was five in total for the five competencies. Each breakout session, there were two activities that addressed that competency. So in the picture on the left, you can see there's feeling cards, which you can see that earlier where those kids had the same feeling card. So the teachers are able to pick a feeling and sort of see what they're feeling, able to express it, and that addressed the social awareness or the self-awareness. And then the second picture, teachers are working together on a math problem, which adjusts the responsible decision-making. So the teachers are really learning and experiencing this together while feeling some of the emotions that each competency would bring out in you. So because, we had food trucks that day, which was awesome. We had, Wendy did a great job organizing, like, five different food trucks. But because we were worried about the crowding, we had these wellness activities. So on the left, you can see coloring, and then on the right, yoga. So we understand that teachers can get bogged down, and it's really important to promote, like, self-care. So we chose these activities that address your spiritual, mental, physical health to help teachers sort of cope with all the stresses that come with the job. So here's some testimonials that come from that day. Mary had about 20 teachers or 20 people throughout the district email her and just say how refreshing and how exceptional the day was, very different from days in the past, and how it was really a great time to, like, ease into the new school year. So from that, Cindy's going to tell us about the additional social-emotional learning we're doing.
So one of the big pieces that came out of that day was the adult social-emotional learning and how all of, all of the people who work together in Danvers, for all of our students, really will come together. So there's a committee that's formed, and it's teachers and specialists and social workers and guidance counselors. And we planned 10-minute lessons to do between, before staff meetings and early release meetings, focusing on the social-emotional competencies. And each of the activities addresses at least two of the competencies. And the neat part about this is that at the end of the activity, the whole staff and faculty are together, you reflect on the activity, and then you realize ways you can incorporate it in the learning day, whether you're teaching a small group or a class size of, like, 25, whatever cohort is in front of you, there is some way you can incorporate that activity into the learning day. And this time just gives us time to discuss about it and reflect on it. Other words, sorry. So the SEL Steering Committee is another piece of the adult learning that goes on. Our Steering Committee is looking at ways to incorporate social-emotional learning for the students, more than just the 15 minutes each day, but really how it can be woven into all of the academics, all of the activities throughout the learning day, and even after-school activities and before-school activities. So we're following the CASL's frameworks, and they address building foundational support and plan, strengthening adult SEL competencies and capacity, promote SEL for students, and to practice continuous improvement. On that note, I turn it back to Mary.
Okay, great. So those, in a nutshell, was all that we did with, on the ECLC grant. But one thing I wanted to highlight to you is a really bright spot for us as leaders of the district was the promotion of teacher leadership. We always have had teacher leaders in our school district, and we had it, but it really became a very defined role for teachers. And that, when we started, we brought on the ECLC grant, it really opened up other ways for teachers to be leaders without being formal, like the math high school teacher leader or, so it gave different leadership role, especially around different types of competencies. So our, it started off with these topical teams, which you have had presentations from around SEL, cultural competence, and the MTSS. But that also, that work ruined Danvers, and we needed to add more teachers to it. So not only were there nine teachers that were these topical team leaders, but then we also got many more teachers on board to help us really deepen the work that we were doing in the district. The SEL and MTSS topical teams led to steering committees, so now we have about 15 to 20 teachers on each of those teams doing that work. So even though the grant is over, the work continues in Danvers and will continue throughout the strategic plan because they are guiding committees to make sure that work gets done. So they have a real, teachers have a real strong role in shaping the actions that we take as a district, and we're really lucky that they did such an amazing job communicating the work today. They did it 10 times better than I could. In fact, I was a week late on this team tonight. So I really appreciate all their hard work and dedication to this, and I can't tell you what a great group it is to work with. I am truly honored that I have such strong teachers working with me to do this work. So that's it. All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you, everyone. Jeff, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I want to start with a thank you as well because you all have day jobs, and this is, you know, this is extra. So this is tremendous to see your contribution to this, because I think it really does make a difference. And I'm glad to hear, you know, things like the food trucks and everything in particular when we have successes like that. In fact, I did a, I think, a speech a couple of years ago to, to kick off the school year, and I had asked one of the teachers, I said, what's, you know, what's going to be exciting? What's going to get everybody jazzed? And they're like, we don't need you now. We need you in March, when we're, like, really have a lull. So maybe we could bring the food trucks back, like, in March or something more exciting. But no, thank you very much for that. Just a couple of quick points. One is on the middle school with the SSR and some of the other comments. I think it is great that we're starting to use a lot of our local data versus the MCAS data. You know, I do think MCAS has a place and it can help in certain areas, but the more data that we can get locally, again, assuming it's not, you know, onerous to collect and we're not doing a lot, but, and we talk about this a lot, so I'm not going to, you know, go into detail here, but hopefully it's an automated process, the review is fairly easy, it's sort of a standard way to do that as well. So hopefully that's, that's kind of continuing, so that's good. On the high school, the MTSS, we talked about it's sort of an early stage right now. What, remind me again, what was the sort of initial assessment as to where that program needs to go? So what are we doing now that we're sort of looking at and saying, okay, MTSS can, can help with, kind of in the future?
Yeah, sure. So it's, it is a K-12 initiative, and right now, we're really focused on literacy because that was our strong base that we had at the elementary level. So again, we, we kind of are learning lessons from the elementary level and moving into the middle and high school. Recently, the week before vacation, we had a secondary team from the MTSS group go to a Department of Education conference, a two-day conference on MTSS. So Dr. Dana joined us, Mary Tatum, myself, Adam Federico, Jason, and teachers. Ellen Farick was there, the teacher representatives from the middle and high school were there as well. And we really started to dive into thinking about what it looks like at the secondary level. And I think that is, many districts are new to it at the secondary level, so we're all thinking about it together. But it is, the multi-tiered system of support is a very, is a strong Department of Education initiative that they really want to see in all the school districts.
Has anybody looked at, I mean, I was thinking through when you said literacy for, you know, some of the younger grades, but would it be subject-based? Is that the initial sort of thinking?
Yep, it is the initial thinking, that, you know, content aerial disciplinary literacy. And we started to do some of that work when the Common Core came out. We tried to, we're trying to keep it alive with, through the one-to-one, but we're going to be refocusing our efforts around that. But then we're also talking about literacy at the middle and high school level, that some students still continue to struggle with reading. So it's really kind of beefing up because we're really, you know, reading to learn a lot more in the middle and high school level. So you have to be reading in science, you have to be reading in social studies to, to learn. So that's where that disciplinary literacy comes into play.
And how would that differ than, say, traditional tutoring? So say if you had, you know, issues like that, how would that differ than, than a tutor or the tutoring programs that we have now?
Right. So it's more catching students as, as the work is happening. So that's what, it's a more proactive model, so we can see that through a formative assessment that you're, you know, you're struggling in a certain area. And so then we try to catch you either as a, in small group instruction during the, you know, like, ELA time, or that we take the RISE block and try to use that time to catch up. So we do it so that you don't, so we're trying to cut down the number of kids that might need that intervention class, you know what I mean, so that we do it more responsibly.
So that, so it's not until it's after quarter or after a semester when you might see grade and say, oh my gosh, my kid needs tutoring. It's, you know, we can do it real-time on it, or even on a micro level, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the goal. Again, that is something that, you know, we're just starting in at the secondary level.
Great. Terrific. Thanks.
Dave?
The SEL presentation was great. Both SEL presentations were great. Dr. Dana's becoming master at theming things, so we get the whole concept going through from start to finish, which is awesome. I don't have any questions there. I love the idea in the middle school of changing the SSR to the RISE program, and I think that fits in with, I wrote down the saying, you said, going slow to go fast. You know, I think that's so important, you know? New things are coming up all the time, and, you know, it's the latest and greatest way to do something, but sometimes you just need to take a breath and say, okay, what are we doing that's right? And what are we doing that we could change, modify a little bit? And I think SSR is a good example of that, modifying it, still having that time for kids to read silently, if that's what's the best thing for them, or to do the other things that fall into that RISE acronym. My only question is, you had mentioned, Ellen, that some of the teams are kind of keeping their kids in their room and working that way, while other teams are kind of sending their kids where they think they might need the most help. Do you have, it's probably too early, but do you have any anecdotal data or even, you know, testing scores or anything like that to show if one way is working better than the other?
Not yet. We were really intentional because this was the first year of making that transition. We really wanted teams to have autonomy over how to use that time, rather than for just us to dictate, okay, now you have this time and this is exactly how you should frame it. So we're really using this year as a, as a whole to kind of collect data, both just anecdotally and having conversations when Adam meets with his, with the team leaders. He's always checking in to get information about RISE block. I check in with the teacher leaders regularly. And actually, at our district data day next Tuesday, that's going to be a big chunk of the conversation with our data leadership team from the middle school to look at RISE block and start to really kind of formalize how we're collecting data to make some decisions about, do we need to sort of standardize how that happens, or should it continue to be sort of more team-by-team? So.
I'm assuming something's going to naturally come out of that to show one way perhaps works better than the other, but it'd be interesting to see if that's true or not.
And I think as we continue to work on or just integrate more of our data analysis on a regular basis, I think that'll make it easier to not only have data to draw from, but also to make more educated decisions about what's best for kids on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis with the RISE block.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Arthur?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. We've heard about a lot of these things at different times over the course of, of the year, and it's good to have it rolled into one big presentation, and, and the information was, was, was great. And just, I would just say, keep, keep going on with what we're doing. It was a good presentation. Thanks.
All right.
Yeah, what I see running through this are probably three big themes. One is improving the teacher skills. The second is intervention in a structured way, and the third being the social-emotional learning. Had the chance to talk about that a little earlier. What sticks out for me in this presentation is that intervention in a structured way, the fact that, and extension, the fact that we're building in conscious blocks of time to be devoted just for that seems to make a lot of sense. I do think it's going to be very important, from Mary's standpoint and, and everyone's really, to really hone in on what the time's being used for and what results we're getting from that, and to always be willing to tweak things, make changes as necessary. You don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak, but really, the evaluative process of what we're doing is going to be key as to how far you can take this and what the students get out of it. But I think what we're doing, those, the But I think what we're doing, those themes that we're approaching this, the areas we're focusing on makes sense, but just be sure to evaluate constantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and your fellow teachers are doing. I was here at opening day and thought it was a great event. It really was exciting. It felt like the staff was really engaged in having a day of being able to do all these activities and see each other and have the food trucks. So thank you for planning that as well, because I know that that was driven by this team. So thank you. A lot of hard work goes into that. And I do agree, I mean, I love sticking with the social emotional learning piece because it is so important in this day and age, and it's not just for students, it's not just for the faculty, it's for families. So it's really important to me because my family and I started this back before it was even, you know, a thought in someone's mind. And I did research on it, and I was like, why are we not doing this? And then after seeing someone speak at a conference, I'm like, we need this. So I'm thankful to the district for bringing it, thankful for the, the grant that allowed us to do more work with it. And it is something that's always evolving. It's something we always have to work at and be mindful of. So, and then the multi-tiered system of support is so important, and it's so important to do it sooner than later and, and help the students that need that extra, whether it's they've completed what they needed and need extra challenge, or students that need reteaching and really, you know, saying, all right, that's, you're going to get this, we're going to help support you. Let's find a way that's going to work. So again, it's all very important, and thank you for all your hard work and the continued work that you're going to continue to do. So thank you. So I think we're all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you to our team.
And when is school committee getting food trucks?
It was an amazing first day for our faculty, yes.
April. I think it's April.
April.
Okay. So we just have two other short pieces under information from the superintendent that kind of rounds out the entire pieces before we look at the FY21 budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Travanda for grant update and facility update.
For our annual grants update attached to the agenda is a list of our grants. You'll see the top third are our federal entitlement grants, which are about equal to last year. We didn't see much of it changed at all. And then the bottom half are all of the different grants that our administrators go out and apply for. So very proud of all of their hard work. You'll see this list has grown over past years, from innovation pathways and project lead the way through different state initiatives, to revamping the credit for life program that will actually be happening tomorrow at Danvers High School for our senior students, to the DEEP teacher grants, and thank you to DEEP for their support, as well as a Stars Mass Cultural Council grant that is helping to fund the Smith mural that will be going up on the new school.
Great. Any questions for Keith?
Nope.
Thank you.
Facilities, Mary's going to pull up just a short time-lapse video that we've been showing you each month. So you'll see at the end of this video, you can see steel starting to come up on the screen So the first steel truck delivered last Monday on President's Day, and then that video is as of this morning. So you can see in a week, we've had steel deliveries as well as the shell of the building starting to go up. So the back is what we refer to as Building B. It's going to be the academic portion of the building, and then the front of the building will be where the gymnasium and the cafeteria is, and that'll be Building A, even though they're building it second, just to keep everybody on their toes. So foundation work continues in Building A, and steel work has begun in Building B. Very exciting. If you get a chance to ride by, I would recommend it.
Even though there's really only one building, right?
There's really, yeah, there's only one. The high school, I think we had six different letters when we were going, so this is.
With the, without the snow, we should be pretty much done, right? Ready to go this year?
60 degrees.
Thanks, Keith.
Not too much in winter conditions this year. Thank you.
Any questions for Keith? Any other?
I have one.
Sure.
Just curious as to what we're doing and what we're seeing in terms of the impact of the site work on the existing operations at the Smith School.
The contractor has been great to work with. It really has been minimal. I think that it has been an interesting learning experience for the students as they get to look out and see the construction site. And Mrs. Grady just left, but I know when I talked to Mrs. Grady, she's very excited, and the kids are very excited. We've been able to cut some viewing panels in, so it's really been that real-world application of learning, to be able to do that with them. But we do have blackout periods in place for deliveries and blackouts for work during when we're going to have MCAS testing, and so the contractor's been very receptive even today. We decided that the steel work was a little bit closer to where the outdoor recess area was, so we went out and we cone off part of the recess area to make sure that we, we kept it safe. So it really is an ongoing daily conversation with them, and that we have our weekly construction meetings to bring up any concerns that we might have had.
Good, because I think the, you know, seamlessly providing the education piece is important, certainly to the students and the parents and to us. So kind of keep us updated on that as we go.
There's always a few blips here and there, but everybody's been great team players to make sure that we don't, you know, keep reliving those same pieces that we learned from.
I mean, I haven't heard otherwise, but it's good, good to hear it. Thanks.
No questions. Thank you. Thank you for the video. It's quite amazing how quickly, like, the video shows all the work, but it's been a process, so, and we've been very lucky with the weather, so, thank you. All right. So our next order of business is the public hearing for the Danvers Public Schools 2020-2021 budget. The budget process is something that starts actually right after town meeting in May of the previous year. The process that we work on all year, it's collaborative with the town, the administration, and the school committee, that we work towards presenting a final budget to the Selectmen Finance Committee in the spring of this year. So with that, Dr. Dana and her team will be presenting the budget proposal.
Thank you. So thank you. Keith and I are going to present it as a team, where Keith leads this budget process with our team and the work with the town also. So we'll talk about that entire process. Would like to begin by thanking our administrators for the work that goes into pulling, putting this budget together with Keith's direction leading us. Okay. So I'll begin with the overview. Some of the slides are things we've already presented this evening. We'll be able to move through right through the actual budget proposal for this evening. In building the budget, again, it, it really is driven by our strategic plan. We're going to review every program and all of the accounts. We do go through every line item. You have that two-pager that will show every line that we go through. We do a review of our FY20 budget, what our needs have been, what has changed during the school year. And we're going to talk about how this is an ongoing yearly process, and budget is always part of every month that we're working. As the school district will identify the FY21 needs that we have, a historical perspective for you, and then the final budget number of the budget proposals in time for questions and discussion this evening. I have two clickers here. Okay. The annual budget process. We really begin in that December timeframe, working with our administrative team, refining our budget with input from our teachers and our staff and central office. Keith and myself in particular work with our town budget team, the, our town manager, our finance director, and the direct, the library director are the, the main members of that team. So for about three months, we're working together to get ready for the month of February, where we pull it all together for both the town side and the, the school portion of the town budget. So here we are on February 24th to present the budget to our community and to the school committee for our public hearing. March is by town charter, when the town budget needs to present, be presented to the Board of Selectmen. So that will happen on March 14th.
Yes, Saturday.
Saturday, March 14th is the Selectmen's budget hearings. From there, we move into April with the FinCom meetings, and once we have that date, we'll share that with school committee also. We finish up the actual, the voting part of the FY21 budget for May 18th is always that third Monday in May is our annual town meeting. It's held here at the Danvers High School in the auditorium. And then the fiscal year begins on July 1st. With this year for the school year of 2020, will be September 9th will be our first day of the school year. Looking at it, Mary Beth Ferry read our mission statement earlier in our meeting. We really, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for the piece about the connections. So with having a strategic plan that drives all of our work, it's really easy to have those connections because we are all moving in the same direction. And as our group here discussed, looking at having more common language. So we're really trying to refine every strategic plan that we have, that we do focus in on our mission, which hasn't changed, and our core values of care and quality, commitment, and collaboration. And earlier in our meeting, Mary Worms spoke about our vision statement, to have an inclusive community of learners, our welcoming environment, all students are fully engaged and invested, and our students are skilled communicators and problem solvers. This leads us to building our budget based on the strategic plan and moving this district forward. Our three priorities that we spoke about in the earlier presentation, safe and supportive learning environments, our coherent curriculum and instruction, and having engaged students. The strategic planning cycle, we put it under this title, but it really is for all of our work within the district. So here, but we work with the budget, and it's also the work that we do with our own evaluations as we look at our feedback for each other. So there's the self-assessment, so we've reviewed the FY20 budget. We look at an analysis, we set goals, we do our planning, we implement the plan. So we're implementing the FY20 budget now. We look at mid-year cycle reviews, so we look at that, for example, with the budget. We do that on a monthly basis with school committee to have monthly budget reports. And then we look at that summit evaluation. So when we get to the end of the year, we do a closeout of the budget to see where we fell within all of our line items and what the needs were, and that helps us to be better prepared for the next school year. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Keith to talk about this year's FY21 budget proposal.
So as we mentioned, we do work collaboratively with the town to look at what are the needs across the town. So in some districts, it works that you go to the town manager, and the town manager gives you a number, and you have to work backwards to that number. We're thankful that that's never been the approach in Danvers. We really all come to the table with what our needs are, and then we work backwards into how we're going to help balance the budget together. So this year, as we look at our townwide challenges and assumptions, one is retirement funding. This is something we've looked at over the past few years in looking at actuarial evaluations and making sure that we have a funding schedule in place that by the mid 2030s, that we're fully funded. Health insurance, this is actually somewhat of a positive this year, thanks to the Insurance Advisory Committee and work with the town unions. The town will be entering into a new health insurance agreement next year, which will be part of offering a high deductible plan, which will help keep premiums down. So through that collaborative effort, we're looking at a much smaller increase and actually a little bit of savings for next year compared to what it would have been. Special education out of district tuitions, this is something we've talked a lot about this year. We have 10 additional students who moved into the district that are part of our budget. So as we work through this, you'll see how that gets incorporated into what our budget request is. And then other post-employment benefits, that's part B to the retirement funding. The next step is really looking at how are we fully funding that? And there's no fund, firm funding schedule for that end year, but it is something that's trying to shift from the, to the tax levy from being a free cash item. So that way it becomes a recurring item in the budget each year to help keep balanced. As we said, we do, really do an assessment of each program and account on a yearly basis, so looking at what our student needs and staffings are, looking at enrollments at each of our schools, looking at special education, what our contractual obligations are, while focusing on our strategic plan priorities. And we keep looking at how we're going to preserve the solid foundations and focus on the programmatic needs as well as supplementing our needs. And really, this year, the theme was resource reallocation, so looking at what we have for resources in the district and how we can tweak those to best serve the changing needs of all of our students in the district. So contractual obligations, just an outline of what those are. We have four major unions. We have the Teachers Union, which has 15 steps, and we are with, under negotiations for this, for next year. So we're currently in those. AIDS have six steps. For FY21, there's a 2.25% increase, as well as 50 cents per hour added to the salaries to help with the rising minimum wage and ensuring that we keep a differential there to retain the candidates that we want in those roles. Administrative assistance, they also have six steps and a 2.25% increase for next year. And then we have our non-union employees that do not have steps, but that we look at cost of living adjustments on a yearly basis. We also have our cafeteria unit, which isn't pictured here, as their contractual increases are funded through the Enterprise Fund, which is included in the appendix of your budget for what those balances were as of June 30th of last year. As we look at our student needs and staffing for the upcoming year, we really look at what our contractual obligations are. It's always our largest expense for the year. And then we look at our enrollment. So we do have forecasted growth, as we've seen in past years, at the Smith School. So as that grade level K that started three years ago is progressing through the system, there's the need for an additional second grade teacher for next year. And we, at this point, forecast that three kindergarten classrooms will be the level needed for the number of students in that district. Special education, as we've seen, the enrollment at Smith School increased, there's the need for an additional 0.25 special education teacher. That was something we actually have to add mid-year and FY20, based on what those changing student needs were. So we need to now add it into the base for FY21. We've also had to add an additional Learning Center classroom at Riverside School mid-year this year. So that is one teacher and two program aides. Thanks to the team there, we've actually been able to do it with one teacher and one aide for this year since it was mid-year. But to structure that program the way we need it to be, we'll need one teacher and two aides for next year. And then with that increase in service needs and the number of students in those learning centers, there's an additional need for speech services. At the high school, as we look at ensuring that we have full teams in the ninth and 10th grade level, an additional 0.4 special education teacher is needed to round out that model. So you can see that even mid-year within a budget year, we often have to make tweaks. So we pass the budget in March, and then at town meeting in May, and then, right, we don't start school till the following September 1st. So those student needs just keep changing, and we look to tweak the resources even mid-year to meet those needs, and then add them into the following year as part of our base. For enrollment continuing, the high school has seen a decrease in their enrollment from around a peak of 1,000 students to 900. So as part of the budget proposal this year, you'll see a reduction of three teachers, one in social studies, one in health, and one in world language. We believe this will allow us to maintain manageable class sizes and class offerings in each department. So it's always a balance when we look at reductions to make sure that the class sizes are manageable, but as well as, especially at the high school level where there's electives, that we're not cutting so close that we can't offer the electives that we want to offer. At the Thorpe School, class sizes in grade one and in grade two were on the lower end. We actually were able to, based on the MSBA enrollment projections, we had three kindergarten classrooms the past two years, forecasting a growth in that part of town. We do see the growth at the preschool level, so we know they're coming, but it appears that that is slightly behind when it would have been. So those class sizes, while keeping the numbers around 22 or 23 students in classrooms, we can reduce a classroom in grade one and two. That is something that, as we look back historically, going back to the 2014, 2015 school year, Thorpe has never consistently had three at each grade level. They've kind of had twos that have floated through based on the different cohort sizes that have gone through the school. So forecasted for next year will be 15 total teachers in the building. For example, this year was 16, and 2014-15, there was 14, 2015, 16, 15, and 16, 17, 14. So it's really, it's been somewhere between 14 and 16 teachers on a yearly basis, so it, it kind of just goes based on those cohort sizes. So those changes were made, that reduction is being recommended based on the class sizes. Not because of those reductions, but a change that was also able to be made is the moving of two preschool classrooms from Riverside School to Thorpe School. So that is not what drove the classroom reductions. The classroom reductions were, were made first, but then followed from that to help alleviate overcrowding at Riverside is the ability to move two classroom, preschool classrooms over. With that will come a realignment of our specialists and our speech and OTPT and those types of services, and that's the work that we'll start to do during the month of March into April, getting ready for assignment letters that go out to teachers on June 1st. So we'll have to look at what the students' needs are and how we make sure that all of those needs are met by reallocating some of those resources. those needs are met by reallocating some of those resources. As we look at curricular and other student needs, for student engagement, you'll see funding for the early college and gateway programs. So those are programs that we've had in existence for a few years, but we've been finding alternate funding mid-year to help fund them. So this year, you'll see them added into our base. At the middle school and high school, you'll see math textbook increases. So last year, we were able to complete an elementary science adoption. So you'll see a decrease there, and you'll see an increase for middle school, where they have the existing math program, but the online resource that came with the physical textbook purchase is expiring. So we need to add that into the budget. And then the high school will be adopting an Algebra II textbook. As we've been talking about, the special education tuition out, we've had 10 additional students move in that have been placed out of district. So the town, through savings through the budget and funding of the Smith School, we've been able, they will be able to help with a one-time cash infusion of $600,000 next year, and then we'll be looking to utilize $77,000 from the Education Reserve Fund. So it's a one-time $677,000 offset. That will help us bridge that change over two years. So that way, as we look at going into the FY '22 budget, we'll be making up, it's actually about a little over a third, between a third and a half. And then, so we'll look to make up the other half going into the FY '22 budget. Mary Tatum and her staff are already hard at work assessing these new students and getting to know them and getting to know their families and seeing where there may be fits for our in-district programs. But again, when a special education student moves in, if they're already at, let's just say, the North Shore Consortium, then they would go to the North Shore Consortium and continue that until their annual review of the IEP, whereas we work with the families. So again, each year, we really review all line items. We review all personnel structures. We assess our non-salary and curriculum resources. We assess transportation and other contracts. We factor in any known retirements into the budget. We review what our fees are, and we continue to apply for grants. Each year, as we've talked about this year, we continue to know that we have items that we need to watch. So enrollments, especially at the preschool level, is where we've seen the growth, as well as in other, especially elementary classrooms, where the classrooms might be up closer to our target, that if there are additional students that were to move in over the course of the summer, we always have the ability to add another classroom in to meet, again, those changing student needs, which we, when we present a budget in February and when a school year starts in September. We'll continue to watch special education and tuition out, for tuition out and transportation. So again, with those 10 move-ins, we don't have the same contingency placements that we like to have. So typically, we'd like to have two contingency placements going into next year. We're not going to have any built into the budget. So we know that we'll need to continue to watch that closely to ensure that we're within As we look at our FY '20 review, our tax-supported appropriation is $42,317, $317,094. As we've talked about again this year, we continue to look at aids, special education, class sizes, and both regular and special ed and other curricular needs. Our FY '21 identified needs, contractual obligations of $105,000. Again, that's the actual obligation on the book. So that is the teacher aides and the administrative assistance unions. Because the teachers are under negotiations, it's not an actual obligation at the moment. There is funding carried for a settlement with the teachers' union, but it's not an actual obligation at this time. Staffing changes, net, we're actually up .74 positions over where we are in the FY '20 budget. However, it results in a savings of $113,000 because some of the additions were aides and some of the decreases were teachers. So when it nets out, we have $182,000 savings from retirement. Again, special education has a $430,000 increase. That's net of the 677, so actual spending will be over a million-dollar increase over this year. Other non-salaried, as we look at the gateway and early college programs, middle school and high school math textbooks, has an increase of $90,000. And transportation has an increase of $37,000 for the contract for the big yellow school buses. We have 10 of them that we contract out, and based on the market, we're forecasting a 5% increase in that line. And then, as well as looking at historical actuals for athletic trips, we have a significant increase there to meet what those needs have been. Each year, when we look at the budget for FY '21, we ask administrators to look out into FY '22 and FY '23 to see what we might be looking at, so that we have these items on the radar. So last year, we were able to do our first round, or this current year that we're in, we were able to do our first round of implementing classroom libraries for readers workshop. We're thankful to Deep, who is also working to support that initiative at the elementary level. So we're able to continue that for the FY '21 year, but we want to be able to increase that. Right now, we're doing it at grade levels. Really, we would like to get to where we have them at individual classroom levels. So that's something that we'll be looking at FY '22 and '23, expanding project Lead the Way, and other programs that help meet the need of our diverse learners, including innovation pathways and early college. Continue exploration, adoption, and renewal of textbook subscription and our digital apps, monitoring our enrollment growth, including preschool and special education, and continued collaboration with DPW and the maintenance of our buildings, which will include VCT tile floors being added to schools where there's still some carpet. So we'll keep working on that, as well as a new roof being needed at Riverside potentially for the FY '22 budget. Our budget proposal for this year is $43,908,130. This is a pie chart of where the spending is by category. It is unchanged from what it was last year percentage-wise. If we were to add in the one-time funding for special ed, it would cause that piece of the pie to go up by a percentage point. But based on where the net tax-supported appropriation is, that remains unchanged. Each year, we look at our per pupil costs. So as of today, the FY '19 data has not been released. Each year, we submit that data to the Department of Education in October, and then they typically release a per pupil expenditure sometime in March, once they've been able to audit all of the different districts. You'll see that we remain at about the same differential of a couple hundred dollars below what the state average is for spending. Our FY '20 Chapter 70 aids, this is the aid that comes through the state for education, was $7,54,486, which represented 16.7%. That's close to where we were last year at 16.6%, down from, you know, where our peak was back in FY '16. This is just another way to present that data in a pie chart form, so just in addition to show it in a different way, what that funding looks like. In 2019, as we've also talked about at school committee meetings in the past, the Student Opportunity Act was passed by the legislature. It's an additional $1.5 to the Chapter 70 program phased in over seven years with an additional $600 million in inflation. So it'll be a total of $2.1 million investment in education across the state. $330 million were added by the governor's budget that's been released so far. We have not seen the House budget, so the state budget process will go governor, House, Senate, then they'll go to a joint committee, and then they'll recommend a final budget. Sometimes that does not happen until the middle of July, but we've been told that it should not be below what the governor's budget is, and it should only go up. The Student Opportunity Act was mainly geared around additional funding for students with disabilities, low-income students and English-language learners. For Danvers, the increase in Chapter 70 is $269,000 for next year. Again, part of the law was a minimum increase of $30 per student. It's kind of like the general aid, and then the additional aid of approximately $47 for, per student for Danvers, or $164,000. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, we submit to DESI a report on how we plan on spending our additional funding. So every district has to do that. Depending on your level of additional funding, you have to either do a short form or a long form, because our funding increases less, we only have to do the short form. But we still submit that, and part of that is having public input. So we'll be looking at that. We've already done some of that work through our PAC meetings and through other meetings and working with our special ed CPAC, but we'll be looking at also presenting that at the March school committee meeting as another step of public input. Our budget increases over the last 11 years or so, we've averaged 3.01%. You'll see that we tend to spend a lot of time kind of in the threes with a few correction years, depending on what we have going on year to year. The proposed budget for FY '21, again, is $43,908,130, or a 3.76% increase over FY '20. If we were, again, to look at, if we were going to add in those one-time dollars and what our effective percentage would be, it would actually be a 5.36% for what actual spending is year over year. And with that, we'll open it up to questions or comments and feedback.
Also, just like to note that we do have copies of the budget, so hoping, Diane, if you could maybe just put them out at the end, and anyone could take a copy of the budget, too, as we talk, as the school committee now starts to ask questions.
There's plenty of them for whoever wants them. There's 30 copies, so please feel free. And it's also on our website, which we should have started with. So you'll see it on our website if anybody would like to review it.
So Diane, I'm thinking if you could just maybe give out some, and then we'll see, there's plenty over there, and just pass them along if people didn't want them as we get started. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Couple of questions based on, where you're just talking about, Keith. Are we losing any efficiencies by having a preschool at both Riverside and Thorpe?
I would say that we're not necessarily losing efficiencies. That's the work that we're going to get into in March and April, about what that allocation looks like. Our intention always, when possible, is if we do have staff that split between schools, that we try to split it on a day basis and not necessarily on a traveling midday. But that's what we'll get into. And as we look at our long-term growth and as we open the new Smith School, we do see preschool being at two locations in the future.
And then some of these questions I should know, but we do this once a year, so I just need some clarity. For the money that we're spending, and it's quite a bit higher than we expected for tuition out for special education, do we get any percentage of that reimbursed by the state?
So we do. So the state reimburses 75% of tuitions that's over a foundation level. So it's called the Circuit Breaker Program. So in our first years, when we're, we actually submit claims in FY '20 that are based on FY '19 students, and then we spend that money in FY '21. So as we've had these increased tuitions, as we get to FY '21, we'll see an increase in that. The state has also pledged to start doing circuit breaker reimbursements on transportation as part of the Student Opportunity Act, so that'll be funded in over four years. So this sounds confusing, but you'll get 25% of the 75% in year one, which will be next year for us to spend in FY '22. So that should help bridge that gap of the 677,000 as that funding increases, should help close that gap some.
Okay, great. Looking at Section A, a couple of line items, I just need reminding what they're for. 179 longevity.
So as part of our union contracts, there is longevity for teachers or aides or administrative assistants who have been with the system for a certain number of years. So as we've become a little bit of a...
That have met their top step.
Not necessarily even the top step, it's years of service. So typically, it goes with the top step, but if you've been here then for 30 years, your payment is more than if you've been here for 15 years. And so we can forecast how long teachers have been here as of this year and forecast for next year. So that's what the projection is for an actual amount to be spent.
And that's a contractual obligation, right?
Yes.
And I think I know what attendance incentive is. Seems crazy, but is that for, again, teachers that have been here for a long time that have tons of sick days, so they don't use their sick days?
So that is for any teacher who's been here any length of time, or, again, administrative assistant or aide. So it's in all of our units to incentivize them not to call out sick. So if they've used zero days, they get a payment of a certain amount. And the theory behind it is then you're not paying the cost of substitute coverage, so it can save the district if teachers and administrative assistants are in the district and working and better serving the students with their expertise.
Okay. I guess we're also encouraging people to come to work sick, then, with the attendance incentive. You could look at it that way, I suppose. Just seems bizarre to me. But I'm sure it's a contractual obligation. Let's see, Section C. I'm just looking at some of these co-curricular stipends, I guess. And I'm just wondering, you know, what we, you know, some of them I know are like, we have incredible enrollment in certain activities, and others, and, you know, I don't even know who the advisor is. I think it's any of these advisors, but looking at ski club, you know, we're paying someone $1,800 to go skiing four times a year with how many kids, you know? Is it 12 kids? Is it six buses of kids?
So I couldn't speak to the exact number of students tonight. I'm happy to get that information for you, but I can't say that we do a yearly review of what participation is. So some of the activities listed here, if participation numbers aren't there, will end up not being offered for next year. And we'll either pilot a new activity or look, you know, to do something different. And if there's a new activity that's proposed, typically, an advisor does one year of a pilot to see what the interest level is, and then in the following year, it would be put into the budget.
It just seems like that's high for some of the activities. And I don't know how that fits, again, are those contractual obligations for these programs? And do we know how they compare to surrounding towns?
The amounts are outlined in the contract with kind of a clause that says it's up to the school committee's discretion on which to fund on a yearly basis. It's not something we've done a comparison within recent memory from me with other towns.
Just looks like it might be a way we might be able to... It's not a lot of money, you know, overall, but when you add them all up, it adds up. Then I'm just wondering, the stipends on page C11. I understand the stipends for the assistants to the elementary principals because they're doing above and beyond. Why do guidance counselors and psychologists, what do the stipends entail?
They work an additional 10 days for the year, so typically, a week before and a week after school to do all the paperwork and prep work for the school year.
So it's part of their salary, basically? It's just...
Right, we keep everybody on the same scale, right? So everybody's on the same scale, so this is the additional payment for those additional responsibilities and days work.
Okay, great. C14, just wondering what a student data recorder and an operations coordinator are? And I should know that, but I didn't.
The operations coordinator is somebody in my office that helps coordinate all of the bus transportation, as well as doing some work with personnel. And the student data recorder is the person who runs our Power School Student Information Database for all the reporting that goes to the state, as well as working with the high school on their grades and report cards and integrating all of those systems.
C15, technology. I'm just wondering, do you expect to see changes in that since we're consolidating IT with the town, either one way or the other, in terms of cost to the district?
I would anticipate that we'll continue to see some shift of positions from our budget to the townside budget as we, as we make that transition over time. It's not something that we're really looking to do a hard deadline on, but more doing a slow progression to make sure that service levels stay where they're at. Whether the money sits here or whether it sits on the townside budget, it really doesn't make a difference at the end of the day, because if the service level is there, the money gets reported back as part of that end-of-the-year financial report that becomes part of our per pupil. So we really look at it as, as one team across the town, similar to DPW.
Right. The taxpayers are still paying for it, obviously. It just kind of, whose budget it comes out of, right?
Right.
Just a couple more quick ones, hopefully. D3, for the high school, we have, it's for high school students to attend college visits. I don't think we did that this year. If I'm thinking of like College Day, or is that something different than what I'm thinking of?
That was for College Day, and you're right, we didn't do that this year. I think we're going to continue to review what that looks like for next year. I don't think we've made a final decision for FY '21 of this 2020, 2021 school year, so we kept the funding there if we want to tweak the model, again, based on feedback from parents, families, and teachers.
And then I think my last one is... And then I think my last one is D8, the early college and gateway to college program. I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering, is there, has there been any thought given to having students pay a small fee, just like if someone's going to go take a class at North Shore Community College, they would have to pay that fee as opposed to the district bearing the full burden?
So early college is geared around students who have barriers to attending college, so it's, the program's geared around first-generation students who, to open up that avenue. So when we reviewed it, we looked at a fee for that potentially being a barrier to that happening, so it was really about opening that. And then gateway, the gateway program is for students in their junior and senior year who are at risk as an alternate pathway to graduation. So again, we felt that instituting a fee for that would be a barrier to participation.
Okay, that makes sense. I was thinking more like a traditional senior in high school that wanted to take a course at North Shore Community College.
Right, when there is dual enrollment, those students do pay the fee to North Shore.
They do, okay.
Yes, and we work on that.
Thanks for the clarity. I think that's it, thank you.
Arthur?
Can I go back to the stipend thing for a second? So if we offer, if we offer a particular activity, then the stipends are fairly well set, aren't they? Is it part of the contract?
It is.
All right, so, so, again, just so I understand, so if we do ski club, then we need an $1,800 stipend for this ski cup, ski club person, correct?
To match it's in the teacher's contract.
So if we were, and then what you're saying is that we would, if, if people aren't participating, then, then we may not offer that particular extracurricular anymore, but again, if we have, if we're offering it, we have a set number that we pay.
Right, right. And the following year, we might offer dance club, or we might offer whatever, Quiz Bowl, or...
No, it's, it's contract, I mean, everything's contract, and they, and they, first of all, you know, we, I think we always talk about how important, especially in the high school level, the extracurriculars are, and, and how much they connect kids to the school, and how much they help kids, you know, be a part of this, of what happens here, and so it's important to do, and, and, you know, we can't expect the teachers to do it for free, so.
Of course not.
So, so as long as it's something that is actually being utilized, then I think, then we live with what it is, and we're happy about it.
Yeah, that was my question, you know, and again, I like to ski, you know, there wasn't anything about the ski club in particular, I'm just thinking, looking at some of these, I don't, you know, I hear about a lot of the clubs in school, a lot. Some of these clubs I've never heard of, or I hear from about very, very rarely, so it becomes a matter of numbers, you know, it doesn't make sense to have those clubs.
Right, and a lot of them, so let's say, for example, ski club, they are paying the cost for their lift ticket, the students are paying that cost, right? So the cost outlined here is just to pay the, the staff advisor for their time, right? And some of them look high, but for just example, again, ski club is, you know, a Saturday, and it's a 12 or 14-hour trip to go up to New Hampshire and go skiing for the day at the high school level, versus another club that might meet once every other week for an hour, right? So when you look at the amount of total service time, sometimes it looks skewed even though you do the math. And then something like DECA, right, there's so many kids that, right, Meg's doing it, and for the love of the students, and not necessarily, so it's not always a perfect science.
And my question really was just about, I was just, I didn't remember particularly whether the numbers were set in the contract, but I knew it was contractual.
And they typically go up by the contractual settlement, so if there's a settlement for 2%, then the stipends would go up by 2%.
Continuing on, expanding on Dave's questions, he asked about, he asked about the efficiencies of the preschool, but my question would be Riverside's kind of bursting at the seams over there, isn't it? And so we needed to do something else.
Yes, we have multiple preschool classrooms sharing one physical classroom space with two teachers co-teaching. We've had, the music room at Riverside has been moved to a small conference room, and the music room's been turned into a preschool room. So again, for the, the makerspace has been moved to the library, and the additional learning center was put into what used to be the makerspace, so Riverside is...
It's, I mean, it's grown tremendously over the past many years, and, and I'm assuming, and I get, I know you can't tell me this yet, but I'm assuming that when Smith's online, and there's going to be a lot more space over there, so we'll be able to use some, utilize space over there to deal with any type of overcrowding type issues.
And we do, and we have a plan for, we have a plan for both enrollment, so through the flex zones that we introduced last year for traditional enrollment as well as special education programming, looking for, again, the equity for special education students being in the same building for K to 5, that our therapeutic learning centers, as well as our elementary literacy program, will both be housed at the Smith School, which will then open up additional classroom spaces in our other elementary schools once the building opens.
And, and the increase is a little bit higher this year than it has been in the past. It seems to me to be primarily due to the unexpected increase in special ed, is that fair to say?
It is, and right, if we go back and we look at it, $120,000 is what we have for non-salary, non-special ed needs, that we're funding all of our other initiatives, and again, we talked about resource reallocation, so we keep looking at, okay, so what are we doing, what are we doing well, what can we be doing different, how can we better leverage what resources we do have, but continue to make progress that we're not saying stagnant for a year.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm kind of just foreseeing, you know, when we go to the selectmen and we go, we go to FinCom and we go to town meeting, they're, they're very fixated on, on what the number is. So, you know, last year it was 2.98, so this year it's 3.76, so, you know, there're going to be people on, on FinCom that are going to say, well, why is, why is it 3.76, why have you gone up almost a full percentage point? But to me, if we had not had the, the unexpected influx of the, of the special needs students, and, you know, if we do, then we deal with it, and, and we should, it would be back into the 2.9 or 2.8 or something like that.
Well, we'd be at 2.8, yeah, exactly.
So, so, you know, I think that's just a point that, that's important for, for those that think that we spend too much money on our, our kids and the school system, not that, not that they really are that bad, but it will come up. Town, any issues with the town, with, the town is fine with the numbers that we're looking at here? Any pushback from them as it being too high or anything like that?
It really is a collaborative process, and we started early.
Yeah, it is, and I just like to, yeah, okay.
I'm really thankful that they were able to come up with that, the, the one-time cash infusion to help bridge that.
Well, it made a huge difference.
Yeah, right, because if not, it would have been, it could have been a different...
Just as an aside, we had 10 move-ins in that area, what do we, what's an average here? Is it?
One or two.
Okay, so it's really a totally unexpected situation that we just have to deal with.
Right, we always have a few that age out at the end of their careers, we always have a few that move in or might have to go out of district that were in district before, we have a few that come back in, and usually it washes out to be one or two, and, and, I mean, credit to Mary, we really made a lot of progress from being at a peak of 67 students out of district in the past, and have not whittled it down, but got it down to 57 as we've been able to create those programs in district and keep the students here in the least restrictive environment, and then students move in, and students move in, so that's...
So overall, I, I think I'm, I, I end up saying the same thing every year, 95% of this budget is pretty much, it's pretty much decided before we even get anywhere. I mean, it's 83% salaries and 11% special ed and 1% transportation, and that's pretty consistent from year to year, so that's 95%. And then, of course, we use the other 5% to just to get some new textbooks here, or computer programs, or whatever we, we happen to do. Not a lot, Eric and I say the same thing, there are not a lot of fluff in here, I think, and I think, you know, I, I think we've done what we can, and, and I think it's something that the town will accept, which is, of course, the most important, we have to get it passed by town meeting. So thanks for the work, and we'll see what happens.
Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sort of working through the presentation a little bit, Keith, you talked about the townwide challenges, and of course, the issue is that we, there is one large pot of money that has to run the whole town, including us. And you mentioned a couple of things, the funding schedule for retirement. Now, that's really a, what you're referring to there is not our teachers, because they have a separate retirement program, correct?
Correct.
So that's really the town trying to catch up with funding for retirements and anticipated retirements in the future, but nonetheless, it affects our budget.
And our administrative assistants, cafeteria workers, and teacher aides are all part of that town funding mechanism. The teachers are funded through the state system and through state allocations through the governor's budget, but we do have three unions that are included.
And the health insurance does include everybody in our department, so to the extent that there's a townwide challenge in trying to control healthcare costs, and we all know what a bear that is, that impacts everybody. The sped out of district is, of course, specific to us, and the other post-employment benefits, is that similar to the funding schedule for retirement, where that's primarily affecting town central employees versus school?
That, again, though, includes health insurance as, as a post-employment benefit, so especially we are a large chunk of that, because before you become eligible for, and pardon Medicare, right, or Medicaid, I get confused between the two, but before you become eligible at 65 or 67, depending on your age, so teachers can retire at 58, so in between, they go on a retiree health insurance cost, which is a cost to the town.
So you've got a bridge, and that includes our teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So the townwide concerns are also ours for the most part. Enrollment forecasts, that's really on a per-school basis, I mean, we get pretty granular on that to what we're going to need at a particular school at a particular grade level. So when you're looking at our teaching staff versus enrollment, you're basing it on real numbers, to the extent that you can tell, you know, what we're going to have, there can always be move-ins here or there, but basically, you're looking at it at a school level and a grade level.
And so based on birth data and by census block, so we not actually get like who lives at Two Burley Street, but we get within census block 53, there were six kids that were born in, and then working with MSBA, they forecast that for every birth that we have, we'll have 1.1 kindergarten student, and we'll have 1.3 first-grade students.
Okay.
And then those numbers are all geared from that data.
I think there's two parts to that, so that would be the MSBA pieces in moving forward with our Smith Elementary School, and then comparing those numbers, we're able to go deeper, working with our town to look at the numbers, because they weren't matching up exactly the year, but we could see the numbers starting to rise in preschool, so it all made sense. The other piece that I thought you were mentioning was also in the budget proposal here in the appendix are our class sizes. So October 1, we have to report to the state our class sizes, our enrollment numbers for October 1, and we do it by grade level, so every classroom is shown, and then Keith works with his department and moves them all up for a year, so what we can expect for the, the next year. So there's two parts in looking at enrollment.
And I'm going to jump around just a little bit, as I made notes, the attendance incentive that Mr. Thompson was referring to, it's, it's a total of $38,380, so some people say, well, you know, should you have to give money for people not to use sick time? But the reality is, the cost of substitutes can pile up, can add up, and so it's a good trade-off. Again, we don't want teachers walking in and infecting the school, but to the extent that we can incentivize for a relatively small amount, less use of sick time is probably a good thing overall, it's always a balance. I noticed that the network tech was in for 64,200, I'm sorry, 426 last year, and it's down to 24,426 this year? How are we pulling that off? Is that help from the town? Is that how we're...
It is, so you'll actually see a corresponding increase on the town side for that same $40,000 as they assume more responsibilities over our physical infrastructure. We're not ready to make the full switch, that $24,000 remaining will help pay for outside contractors to do work that they're currently doing this year and assisting us. It's actually a position that we've not had somebody, a physical person, in, in a number of years, because we haven't been able to find the right person for it, so we've been using outside vendors.
Okay.
So this is an opportunity between pooling and leveraging the resources that we can find that one person who can help run the whole town-wide infrastructure.
Okay, makes sense. Textbook purchases, are those, are we talking digital subscriptions or actual paper books that kids are going to cover with paper bags now?
So it's a combination across the district. I would say almost all of our textbooks now come with a digital component, but there are some textbooks that we still get, especially in math, I would say, right, is really...
Math in particular.
Classroom sets, and then a digital...
Okay. Does that include what we used to call, I don't want to say tradebooks, but like workbooks, things that are going to be consumed, consumable texts?
And a lot of that is at the elementary level.
Elementary level, yeah.
So you'll see that budget is more consistent at the elementary level and doesn't have the variations at the middle school and high school, because they are recurring yearly costs.
Kind of thought that's probably what it was. Now, in terms of the Riverside School and moving class, tell me at this point, what classes are at Riverside that are, so not the traditional K through five classes? Like, how many classrooms do we have, and what do they do?
So we have four preschool classrooms that are for the integrated model, which is peer partners with special education students, five, five classrooms, sorry, Mary's correcting me. We have two intensive preschool classrooms, so those are for students that need additional services beyond the half-day program, and those two teachers actually co-teach in one classroom, but those are only special education students. And then we have three learning center classrooms that are for our K to 5 students that are needing additional services beyond what our, our normal special education delivery is.
Almost like a life skills or really, really severely impacted.
The elementary level.
Okay.
And that's our district-wide program.
And that's our district-wide, right? K to 5 is within that building for, for all schools in town.
So that's, I mean, that's a lot of specialized classrooms. I take it that's more than any other school in the district?
Yes, and as the Smith School opens, that's where we'll be looking to help level some of that by, by moving some of the other programs out of our other elementary schools, and then being able to relocate some preschool will help to balance those services.
And that's the reason that we're moving the two, two classrooms from Riverside to Thorpe for this year, which buys us some time, gives us a little bit of relief in terms of space on Riverside, and then once Smith School is fully online, we'll be looking at all that again.
So then we know another classroom at Thorpe School, we know that program will be moving to the Smith School, so we know we'll have another classroom there. So if in a future year, those numbers go up, and, and we need three at another grade level, we'll be able to add that, because we'll have the physical space.
All right, and that decision is, was completely that, that was sort of an operational decision versus looking at then the enrollment at the Thorpe School and determining that we didn't need quite as many teachers next year as we have this year, we could compress a couple of classrooms.
Right, so the enrollment decision was made first about the number of teachers there, as we do our yearly review, as we do every year, we look K to 5 at the number of students in classrooms, and then the operational decision was made then at a later date that, oh, now there will be room, so we could do this as, as I would just say, an added bonus to that, but not, it was not the impetus for the decision to reduce the two classrooms.
Eric, can I just follow up on that?
Sure, please.
Because every year, we have different schools, maybe gaining a teacher, losing a teacher, whatever, but this year it's Thorpe that's losing a couple of teachers. Will their class sizes still be, will they, those, that's first and second, will it still be consistent with the other, the other four schools? Because that's, that's usually what I'm concerned about, that, that we have consistency amongst the, the various elementaries.
Yes, they will. So we have usually between 18 to 22 students, and in...
Excuse me, please let Superintendent speak, you'll have your time when we're done.
In the budget packet, you'll see what we project for the numbers, so it would be, I believe, and I'll just look for the correct numbers, but it would be 22 and 23 students. For Thorpe School, we'd be looking at first grade at 22 and 22, and second grade at 22 and 23, where they were this current school year. They were at, our current kindergarten is at 15, 14, and 16, and our first grade is at 15, 15, and 15. And again, that decision was really made because we anticipated more students coming into kindergarten, and when then that didn't happen, we didn't then in August close the classroom, we kept the classroom there to do that. So now that we see that the numbers are in preschool, and an opportunity, again, as Keith has shared, is looking at our budget with putting an entire budget together for the entire district, there needed to be resource allocation changes, and that was the recommendation that we're making to school committee.
Okay.
And our target enrollments have been 18 to 22, 23 for a number of years, we have had classrooms in the... We have had classrooms in the past that have been at 26 or 27. 25 is the contractual cap without additional payment, but then we can go up an additional two students to 27 in the one-to-five level for an additional $10, or an additional payment to the teachers for those additional students.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Sure. I sort of have the same overall comment as Arthur does, which is, we're really looking at a 5% play in the budget. And the only way to, if you need things beyond that 5%, you've got to find a way to find efficiencies in the other sort of committed portions of the budget. And it looks like that's what you've done to some extent, you've balanced, really looked closely at the enrollment. So I get what you're trying to do. Obviously, we're going to hear from some parents about the Thorpe issue. I will say that what I did was look at this year's enrollment, and right now, going into the discussion, I'll say that Thorpe first-grade classrooms have the lowest number of students of any first-grade classrooms in the district. Second grade, really the same, well, not quite the same. Riverside had a few less second graders, but by and large, Thorpe was a little low this year. And we have a number of classrooms right now at all grade levels, particularly Highlands, which has often three classrooms per grade level. But almost every classroom in Highlands has, with the exception of one, has at least 20 students. So I'm interested to hear what the parents say and what their concerns are, but I will say, numbers of 22 and 23 are not out of line with what we've looked at in previous years or what other schools have. So I'd be curious as to what makes, why this will be more of an issue for Thorpe than, say, some of the other elementaries. Having said that, like I say, I'm interested in hearing what people have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jeff?
I'll start with special education and go to enrollment. So on, is it A8? I think it's slide A8. So we talked about percentage for special education. You said, I think, Keith, it was 11%. It's been consistent over the past several years. But I was trying to see, so part of teacher salaries is also for special education teachers? Where do we see a breakout for special education teachers? Not teacher aides, but teachers?
So it's a, special education teachers are included in the 67%.
Right.
In the larger.
But do we, can we get a breakout for special ed? Because my, is that going up as well over time? Because I mean, I know we put it with teachers, but has that been going up over the past?
So that's something that we could break out in future years. We have that information that we have internally. It's not something I have tonight at my fingertips, but it's something that we could provide.
This is why we have all this technology. Yeah, I mean, I just say that because why do we break out teacher aides versus not teachers? Special education. Because our teacher aide, you know, expenditure for special ed is going up.
Significantly.
Right, significantly. So is our expenditures for special ed teachers going up as well?
And so, I mean, if we looked at page C17.
Yep.
We do break out that, so in FY '20, we're spending 6.4 million, and in FY '21, we're going to spend 6.6 million. So we do have those numbers.
So that's student support, is that what special educate, student support services is?
Yes.
Student, okay.
So from speech pathologists to psychologists to the special education teachers.
Okay. So if we were to include that, that 11% possibly could be growing over time or decreasing or I don't know.
No, it has grown in comparison to what our regular education programs have grown.
Okay.
We've had a more significant funding in special education over the years.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that because I think that's sort of a trend. The trend is possibly growing a little bit versus everything else.
And some of that has gone with having that tuition outnumber stay down, right? We've invested in our programs that we have in districts. So we've made a conscious decision to do that, but we've also looked at the high school and moving to team models through 10th grade to make sure that we're, we're starting to try to close those or continue to close those achievement gaps and looking at our younger learners and what they really need.
Right. Because the, if I did the math right, which could be wrong, so 10 additional out-of-district placements, rough cost $670,000. So we're spending an average of $67,000 per student for each of those out-of-district placements.
So I would say if you need to do the 677 plus the 400, which is like 1.1, so I would say it's more about $1 million for 10 students or about an average of 100,000.
So 100,000.
Out-of-district placements range from $66,000 up to $280,000, $300,000 a year, depending on who the students are.
Gotcha. Because our average spend per student is $16,283. And that includes, that is including those students.
Right.
And so if we took those students out of the $1 million, $40 million, but, I mean, it's not a lot, but our, and I'm saying that because the state average is 16,465, and so we say, we're roughly comparable to what we're spending per student per state, but if you take that out, I mean, it could be, you know, less.
Right. And then that's where you'd have to do a comparison to what other districts in the state are doing and how many students they have out of district.
Right. So it's, I was originally thinking 67,000, which was only four times, but it's orders of magnitude of significantly more, seven or so. But that is something that has peaks and valleys, like you said, right? And so that, that is not the general, I think the general trend is what I was trying to get at, more with the salaries and the, you know, bringing more in and being more inclusive, which I think is a much better strategy for the students and for their own learning, too, which is good. Okay. And then I will just briefly mention, had a question on projections for enrollment. So, you know, I go through this every year, and I get more questions from parents. So I was a Riverside parent, so I lived through the 25, 26, and I got more calls, and I was there as well, talking about it because, and that's why I supported the Smith School so much. It's just absolutely needed. I mean, our issue is not having more teachers, our issue is always having the space. And so I definitely want to hear what the parents have to say about this as well, so I appreciate everybody coming. But my question is actually on projections. So MSBA enrollment projections projected us for this year roughly 965 at high school, 897 at middle school. If, and I could be off a year or two, depending on what the year is, but our actual middle school is roughly 817 versus 895 for the high school. How, I mean, I know we can't account for that. Why are they off so much after they did this in 2016? What changed to make that happen?
And we keep looking at that and trying to dig down into why, because historically, the projections that they provided us were within one or two students. So over a 10-year period, we had back-to-back studies and they were spot-on. I would say that at the high school level, we have seen with Essex Tech being built, an increase in the number of students attending there. We don't have a lot of students, but St. John's Prep did open the middle schools. There has been some other kind of environmental or other option changes that have happened that may have affected it some, but that's information we keep trying to dig into.
Yeah, that was one of the things I was hoping we could look at as well, you know, and we talk about this a lot during FinCom and other financial reviews as well, where, you know, Essex Tech spends more per student than we do on average. It is still funded through the town like ours is, and so, you know, a lot of parents say, well, you know, what's going on with the tech? Why are they, you know, why are we spending so much there? You know, can't we spend more here?
And you'll see that assessment is up significantly for this year as the town presents their budget with the number of students. So we've actually also had meetings with Essex Tech to have conversations about what enrollment targets do they have at any or what are their admissions policies? So to try to look at especially that particular school, where it is another publicly funded school.
Okay. Good. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Have a few questions. On C17, line item 80165, nurses. It lists seven. We have seven nurses in the district or do we have nine?
We have nine. Thank you. There'd be a typo.
That's all right.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
No, we did combine those. In past years, we had those, we had elementary and then we had secondary nurses listed on different lines. So this year, we went back and we updated that to consolidate them to one line.
So does that corresponding line item down below, is that number the same?
The salary total is the same. The dollar value is the same, the FTE listed in the top needs to be.
So because there's two at the high school, two at the middle school, and then the five elementary schools.
Correct. So we'll make that change and update it in our electronic version.
Okay. Another question, C14, Danvers Carers Director, $32,473. Is that the total amount or do we share that with another town department? Or a grant or?
Grants. So that's a co-funded between the district and the different grants that are, that was included earlier in the agenda and is also in the appendix through the CARA grant, which is a federal grant, as well as through the state SAPC grant, which is a co-grant with Gloucester.
And is that something that we have to reapply for each year or is it like a?
It's multi-year.
Most of the budgets are multi-year.
Okay.
So, but we continue to review that and what different funding opportunities are with Lila on a yearly basis to also be applying for alternate funding to continue to look what grants are out there.
And the resource officer, is that a salary? Is that the total salary or is that something split with police?
That's something split with the police. It's a contribution that we agreed to make that continues to go up by a 2% or a different amount each year, working collaboratively with them.
Yep.
But it's a co-funding.
Oh, so is that, but that's for both resource officers?
It is. So we're only funding.
Point six.
And there's also a sergeant in the juvenile division now, so it's a, I would say, a robust department that we're making a small contribution towards from our operating budget.
I can't find it, but I had it earlier. Graduation line item, graduation supplies, I can't remember where I found that. But that went up a bit, considering the numbers are maybe a little lower. Is that just, we're not really doing anything new or different, it's just the cost of everything has gone up?
Correct. And this is the first increase in that line in six years that we've had. So, right, the cost of the balloons is still the cost of the balloons.
Right.
But the cost of renting, faculty regalia might have gone up, or the cost of renting the chairs, just through inflation.
Okay. On D12, 80804, the athletic trips. So was that in one of the spreadsheets, zero at one point and now it's 20,000? Is that?
No. It was at, it was probably five years ago, it was at 7,500.
Oh, okay.
And then we increased it to 10,000, and then this year is increasing it to 20. Those are for trips that we have to contract with this year's Salter Transportation for.
Okay.
So we own four school buses, and our drivers do as many of the athletic trips as they can. And kudos to the students, but they've been very successful in recent years. So, right, it's hard sometimes, and so basically, looking over the last five years, it's been significantly underfunded each year, and we've looked for other savings from the line that wouldn't have been all spent, but we felt it was time to increase that line to fully, come closer to fully funding it. I wouldn't even say that's necessarily fully funding what they need.
It's expensive. Also, on D12, I know you updated for school committee, 80801, there was a typo. I don't know if you updated the book, but.
I did not update the copies that the audience has, but we did update.
For school committee?
For school committee.
And you'll update it online, right?
Tomorrow morning, I'll go put the new one online.
Yeah, the number was not quite right, but.
The daily rate was listed in the original copy is $325 a day. With the 5% increase, it will really be $340 a day. Again, the total dollar value was correct, and it's forecasting a 5% increase based on looking at the market when we go out to bid. If you look at the two-page or back in the A section, it shows it as a 7% increase, but that's because we're not increasing the fees, so that delta becomes more because we're increasing 5% on the total, not 5% on the net.
Okay. And then on C10, the co-curricular stipends. So just remind me, the alternative funding for some of the line items, where does that alternative funding come from?
From different fundraising activities. So the middle school does their magazine drive, and then they might use some of that funding for that. The theater organizations all do private fundraising as well that goes to their parent-type, booster-type groups, and then they contribute to funding extra positions to help, you know, make the reductions even better.
So they self-fund themselves in a way?
For part of it.
Yeah.
Right? So it would be, well, we don't have the money to have a tech director, but we have the money to have the director and the choreographer, but if you want to have all three, not have people having shared roles.
Okay. All right. So then, let's just go back to Smith School. I have a couple of questions. Actually, let's start with preschool. Just, can you explain to me the preschool program and how it works? Like, why do we have preschool?
So you said Smith School, do you mean Riverside?
Well, right, we're gonna, I was gonna talk about Smith, but I want to actually start with the preschool program first, and then I'll go into the Smith.
Sorry.
Sure. As I say, we'll ask Mary to fill in any pieces that we may not have correctly between Keith and myself. The preschool program is part of the law, so children are in early intervention first through 2.9, and then schools continue that education starting at the next level for our three- and four-year-olds. As part of that program, we have students that have an IEP, and we're required to have peer partners in the integrated classroom model, so we have that as the model, and then if students need additional services, that's the intensive preschool classrooms that we have.
The peer partner portion of that program is a tuition-based program. So those families pay tuitions to participate that helps offset the cost of running the preschool program.
Legally, do you have to have a peer for the preschooler that needs the special ed services?
There's a balance to that. It's not one-to-one, but yes, there's a balance to that.
Balance. Get enough, right, in the community. Okay.
Anybody would like their children to come to Riverside Preschool or Thorpe Preschool, preschool of the Danvers Public Schools in the future, please reach out to Mary's office.
So preschool is something that we have to legally have, provide, right?
Yes.
And that number, you know, fluctuates, it's been going up, right? And that's, okay.
I think early intervention programs have been stronger, so kids are getting identified earlier, which is good because then that's the earlier they can receive services, and then as well as some of the enrollment growth.
All right. So then, going to Smith. So now, moving the two, taking away a classroom for the first and second grade, we're bringing down that number to 22, 23. Now, say we start and fall and we've got a few more move-ins, how, how do we handle that?
As we have in past years with other schools, we would add an additional teacher if the numbers granted that, and then we would find the space to make that work. So we've done, you know, in different years, we've had music on a cart in the school, which isn't, you know, ideal. We've had Michael Amorals done music on the stage for a year at Thorpe in the past. We've done that at, in a conference room at Riverside this year, we have music, so we look at what different programs can use alternate spaces.
And we also, if we add one other piece, because with the school committee, working with the flex zones, that also gives us capability to look at the different streets that are now part of a flex zone and to give more choices to help to have better equity in our numbers across the district and the five elementary schools.
So it's something that you constantly are looking at, either through principals, reporting, or checking in, right?
And we have central office, central registration through our office now, so we're able to see those students as they're enrolling, and our staff helps us keep up on the latest numbers.
Let me just see, I got a couple of things here. I think you touched on it in the presentation. So with the preschool moving, two preschools moving to Smith, they, Thorpe, sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to confuse it. Specialists. So Riverside has the specialists. Did you say there was, you'd be looking at the staffing assignments, meaning you would have staff at Thorpe for those students, right?
And that's really based on an individual student need, so as we start to look at which students would be in which building, is where we would have the data to be able to make those decisions about what staffing level that they need to, so how we would reallocate those resources from Riverside to Thorpe.
And that we do for June 1st. Teacher assignments come out by June 1st.
And so I know the preschools, where they are at the same building now, they do a lot of collaboration, but that collaboration will continue, be it through professional development or department meetings or grade-level meetings. or grade-level meetings, correct?
We do similar with grade five, where we're able to create opportunities for, because those are subject-based teachers, so the grade-five math teachers come together on Friday mornings, and they all have prep during that same block. So again, looking at the preschool teachers, we'd be looking at that same type of model where, you know, Monday mornings and Friday afternoons is really the time where they do a lot of their professional development and their planning, so in those time periods where they would be able to work together, so.
Let me just see. And we kind of also taught, you touched upon long-term, a long-term plan for preschool, with numbers potentially going up, and once the Smith School does come onboard the new school, looking at those, that new space, right, and seeing what can be moved or added to the Smith School, and then how preschool can, is that what we?
We have a tentative plan on what the programming at Smith looks like, because we had to work with the Department of Ed and submit a plan through MSBA for what programming would be there. But by moving that programming there, it opens up capacity in the other elementary schools.
All right, I think, I think that was the end of my questions, let me just double check. Okay, and again, this is a collaborative process that we make with the town. And we do have to go, and we do have to present in front of selectmen and the finance committee, and questions are asked similar to what we've asked and what the community has asked. But we all work together for a final budget that works best for all vested parties, being the teachers, the students, the community. So it is a process that we try to balance for everyone, so. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. We will open it up to questions. I would ask that you go to the podium and state your name, and you can direct the question to me, and then I can direct the question to the appropriate people, okay? So, anyone like to speak?
I want to look at you, so.
I got appointed the kind of official unofficial person, so. I'm Caitlin Monahan, I have two children currently in Thorpe, and one eventually going to Thorpe. And we, you know, when we, we found out this was happening, we totally understand and respect as the district, you know, it's growing, things, you know, people are bursting at the seams, and this is not, you know, we're upset because one little change is happening. But, I mean, some of the data presented to us tonight, for instance, the projections for next year, that there's going to be three kindergartens of 20 kids each. So in, so we're also cutting a first-grade class and a second-grade class. So when those kindergarteners move up to first grade, are we then going to have 30 kids per class? Because we're only going to have one first grade and one second grade.
No, I was gonna say Keith, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, we would look again to be within our, what the target enrollment size were, and be keeping three first grades for that year, for that.
But if we're giving up two of our classrooms to preschool, then where's the space going to be?
So the physical space for that, there's a special education program that will be moving to the Smith School for the start of the 21, 22 school year.
Okay.
That would open up that physical space for it.
Okay. And I, I think, I mean, there were some comments about our concern that the class sizes were getting too big. And on the, you know, the state average for class size is 17.9 kids. And in Danvers, it's reported as 18.7, which is higher than the average for the state. So we do start to get some concern when we're significantly higher than the state. So, you know, in the, the idea of that we are growing, we are bursting, we're adding preschool classrooms to other schools, and then we're going to be having music on a cart, and then we're going to be having music and art on a cart, and, you know, sharing all these spaces as our school grows. Is there a plan for a new Thorpe school to accommodate for all these changes as, you know, we had a plan for a new Smith School? I mean, is that something that's on the, the agenda of the town to look at so that we can continue to accommodate this rapid growth, so we're not all busting at the seams all the time?
So, I would say that as part of the MSBA process, when we looked at them with what our enrollment projections were going to be, they said to us, you might be coming back to us and saying you need an addition at a school.
Okay.
So that's something that we'd be looking at in the future, depending on how those numbers look and what the special programming looks like, and how we balance all of that. At the moment, the Smith School is not full, so, right, there'd be some opportunities there to look at what that looks like as we balance it, and it's really a year-to-year process because we can only forecast so much based on the changing student needs. As we said, we've added programs this year mid-year based on what's happened.
Keith, can I just?
I was just gonna say, the other thing is that, that Smith School, I mean, that's built into Smith School, too. I mean, Smith School is, is, is being built for a substantially larger population because it's very difficult to, to build schools, to get, get the money to build the schools, to get the, the town to come up with the money, and to get the state to, to, to provide, through their program, to build schools. So, you know, we, we may come back in a, in a few years, but the other, the other cities and towns have their turn, too. But Smith School is, is being built for how many students?
So it's being built for 465 students, but with four classrooms at each grade level. So the max capacity is actually more than 465 potentially. And that's why we introduced flex zones last year in trying to make decisions at the kindergarten level to have students start their elementary career in one school and continue throughout, and not do a formal redistricting where kids have to move in third grade, even though I know, I think some of our committee members had to live through that themselves of attending multiple elementary schools.
That's Bill Clark, he talks about it every time.
I lived through that as a fifth grader.
They had the portables at the high school.
Well, we went, we went through that. I mean, I, when I started, Thorpe was K through six, and, and all the elementary schools were. And then 1972, the population kept growing, and all of a sudden, every sixth grader in Danvers found himself in the portables, you know, built next to the Holt and Richmond. So things do change. I mean, I can tell you that in my time on the school committee, that's why I brought up the notion that we look at the population per school every year to try and figure out what we need space-wise. And, you know, if you go back in time, you'll often hear, we've often been told, "Look, we thought we only needed two classrooms at Smith this year, but we had a bunch of move-ins over the summer, and so we had to hire a new second-grade teacher, and we're going to move money from here to there." So there's that short-term plan, hey, what are we looking at for next year? What do we really need to run the program? And then there's the long-term, okay, projecting out, where's the space that we're going to be able to access? Right now, it's at Smith School. And, you know, we're looking at that flex in terms of the borders between the different districts, you know? And so, yeah, some students coming in, you know, on the same street, maybe 10 years ago they were going to Thorpe, now they'll go to Smith. So it's a, there'll be some changes, but I don't think they're going to be earth-shattering for anybody. It's something we plan for.
And if those first graders moved in over this summer, and the numbers dictate another first-grade classroom, we would figure that out. We have preschool classrooms this year sharing a space at Riverside, right? So they could always go to, still sharing a space next year at Thorpe, right? So there are options for if the enrollment numbers increase. That we're, we're not, we're not looking at having 30 kids in the classroom, ever. That is not.
Never.
Good, again, our target ranges is really, our ideal world is 18 to 23, is what we talked about. When we submitted to the Smith School, we said we wanted somewhere between 18 and 23 was the goal. That's been the target.
And, you know, one of the concerns that's been brought up by, a bunch of parents brought concerns to me, so I'm kind of voicing everyone, was that, you know, some of us have had children who go to the integrated preschool at Riverside. And so Riverside has a really wonderful setup where the kids can come and go without disrupting the school too much, because they come in, in and out of those side-door classrooms. And, and if they do have to go down a hallway, it's not where all the main academic classrooms are. But at Thorpe, there's going to be four times a day, five, well, you know, four days a week, where there's going to be kids and parents in vans coming and going from the school, and kids marching in and out, and all of, so many of our classrooms are right on those front windows. And so when we have dismissal, for instance, my first grader can look out the window and wave at me as I'm standing out there waiting for him. But next year, my soon-to-be first grader, who has a wandering eye anyways, is going to have this out his window four times a day of people coming and going. So, you know, is there, I would imagine there'll be some sort of plan to minimize that distraction, because that is going to be a huge distraction for a lot of our kids coming in. I know right now, our kids come in through the cafeteria in the morning, and they leave through the cafeteria when they're on buses, but there's going to be kids and lunch, and, you know, if, I mean, there's, obviously, there's a lot of things to, to look at. But I know that's a major concern of a lot of parents, that the commotion that it may cause coming in and out based on our setup.
Can I just address that quickly?
Yeah.
Just as a, a parent whose children all went to Smith School, the school with no walls. They adapt really quickly. My oldest, you know, she could tell you everything that was going on with every person in that entire school, you know, talking about a wandering eye. So I, I can understand you'd be concerned, but they definitely adapt.
We can certainly look at.
Right.
Legitimate point.
You gotta be able to do that.
That's what we, right, started our conversations.
Right, right, because I know, and. Am I missing anything else on my foot? Oh, you're coming up, okay. I'm just trying to make sure that there's, because that's going to be like 100-plus preschoolers every day that we're going to see with two classrooms. So if the, if the preschool classrooms have 18 to 20, whatever, there's two classrooms, so that's 50 kids in the morning, or maybe 40 kids per morning, and 40 kids per afternoon that are coming and going. So that's a potentially 80 kids coming and going from.
Preschool's capped at 15.
Oh, okay.
So it's, would be, yeah, it would be 30 kids in the morning and 30 kids in the afternoon if it was fully.
So 60, which is still a lot, but.
And that's not five-day, it's a, is it?
Four-day program.
Four-day program.
Four-day program, so there's no preschool on Monday mornings or Friday afternoons.
So five days a week, there's kids coming and going from the school. Three days a week, there'll be 60 coming and going. One, two days a week, there'll be 30 coming and going. Okay. And, you know, one of the, for us, our, our kids, I wanted to kind of speak a little bit to the really amazing job that Thorpe School has done from a social-emotional perspective, and the investment that Mrs. Ward and her staff have made. And we as parents, when we are with our kids at a birthday party, or, you know, something, we, we get comments constantly about how, what a nice group of kids, the Thorpe School kids are, that they get along with each other, they understand each other, they know each other really, really well. And I think a lot of our concerns with these growing class sizes is that those kids are going to lose that ability to know their peers as well as they used to. And to, you know, my, my, my son knows every one of his peers incredibly intimately because there's 14 kids in his class. You know, he comes into a safe place every day, where he knows if he's having a hard day that tomorrow, they're still going to be his friends. But with 22, 23 kids, how do you get to intimately know your classmates in that same way? How do you still have that safe space? And, you know, that's, that's a huge concern for us as parents, that the comment was, well, every other school has, has this, but, you know, when you, when you look at the, the state numbers, we're, we're higher than the state averages. And so that's a huge concern as parents and taxpayers, that our, our kids are not getting that as individualized attention, and that the amazing job that Mrs. Ward and her staff have done to facilitate that, you know, are we going to see that change, and what resources may be allocated for those changes as well? So, just to throw it out there as, you know, concerned parents.
Right, I mean, from being a parent myself and being a school committee member, I know we have wonderful teachers in this district, and principals and administrators that are going to be able to help the students still intimately know their classmates. So whether it's two classes or three classes, that whole class, that grade level, they should know each other. They should know each other in an intimate way as best they can. But there is always going to be different personalities all through their whole, you know, my kids spent six ye, I had two kids go through Riverside, spent six years there with each kid, and then the middle school, and, and the groups of kids that move on. So my high schooler that graduated last year, his friends from elementary school, and then the friends he met in middle school are still his friends today, even though they're in college. So I really think, I don't think it's going to hurt friendships, but it might increase more friendships, you know, having them in the class together. I don't know, Dr. Dana, if you wanted to speak to the social-emotional part of it, but I, I think hearing the presentation tonight from the teachers, I mean, they're doing a lot of work in this, in this district, and they continue to do it, and they will continue to do it daily. So I, I mean, I don't, I don't see it as a negative in any way.
I did the Highlands presentation that we had this evening. So our fifth graders at the Highlands School, which have numbers in the twenties and, and their ability to really talk about how they got to know each other. So social-emotional learning is a priority as part of our strategic plan, and that will continue. So whether it's the lower class size, or more at the average that we have for the district. The other piece with the, the state pieces, and Keith and Mary could share a little bit more about it as to how all those numbers go into that. Sometimes there are differences based on decisions that districts are making. So the calculation from that part of all the information that we report to the Department of Ed is really a strict calculation on how many classrooms. So if we have a classroom that we spoke about with some of our more intensive classrooms, and there are six children in that classroom, or four students in that classroom, and then we have a classroom of 22, all of those are averaged together. So another district that may do more inclusion, less inclusion, those numbers are going to vary. Or whether we're a district that's pre-K through 12, or we're a regional district, or we're an elementary district, all of those things come in. So the difference between 17 and 18, to me, I wouldn't say that that would be a significant difference in those pieces. It's somewhat relative, and the state doesn't go in to disaggregate that data. It's a, a total number.
I just also add that, I, going back to the support piece, is every year at all of our classrooms, we continually look at different assessment datas and different student behaviors, and if there's a need for additional reading teacher support, additional Title I support, additional teacher aid support, whatever that might be, based on the actual profile of the students, we're always committed to adding that, and each year, we do add that to various classrooms. So that will be something that we'll look at, not only in first and second grade, but third, fourth, fifth, and across all the schools. We do that room by room.
Anything else before? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristin McClarkie, and I have spoken with many of you on the phone before, and met with Dr. Dana, thank you Caitlin. A lot of my concerns were addressed through the conversation you all just had. But I will say, I'm also, I'm a teacher in Middleton, and our class sizes are a lot smaller, which we are lucky for that. But I, I was also lucky enough to have a really nice conversation with Dr. Dana last spring, because with the flex zones in place, she was able to move my son from Riverside Kindergarten to Thorpe, and he had a wonderful year in kindergarten, he had an amazing teacher, but his, I felt as a teacher, as an educator, that his class was too large. It was more than 22 students. And, and I, I did not feel like he was getting what he needed, even though he was in very capable hands. It's just too many kids in a room in kindergarten. Not even the most talented kindergarten teacher in the world could do that. And this year, he has had an amazing year. He has 15 students in his class at Thorpe in first grade, and he is, it's like night and day. So when, when we think that it's okay, because all the other schools have large classes, it's not okay. Because I see the difference. I see how he is glowing when he comes home, and his teacher in first grade at Thorpe is amazing. Mrs. Detremont is wonderful. And like I said, he had a wonderful kindergarten teacher, too. But he is a different child now, because he is getting the attention of his teacher, he is getting more small-group instruction, he is getting that in math, in writing, and he's getting it on a daily basis, and he's getting that SEL piece, and he's getting it in a smaller class size. And that's what students need. They don't need 22 and 23 students in a class. If you go way back to the most respected research on class size, the STAR Project, which was done in Tennessee, it says that best student learning achieve occurs in a class of 14 to 18 students at these young ages. So we're not helping our students by making these large class sizes. And it doesn't matter that it's okay, because it's across the, the schools. It's not okay. And I see it in my own son. And I question, how, we have these great initiatives, these SEL initiatives, the PBL. How is a second-grade teacher, next year with 23 students in her class, going to do a PBL project when it's just her and 23 kids? How is that going to happen? What is that going to look like? Project-based learning? Project-based learning? You've got 23 second graders, some reading, some writing, all in different levels, and you've got one teacher and 23 students. What does that look like? Do you know?
Yeah, because it's been going on. I mean, the fact is, we've been doing that. Sometimes it's 23.
PBL is, that's a new initiative.
Sometimes it's 23, some, listen.
But the PBL is a new initiative. It hasn't been going on.
I don't disagree with you. We would love to have 15 students in every classroom in every, in every, in every elementary school. It's impossible. There's not the money to do that. It can't be done, okay? It would be great.
It's being done in other towns right down the street.
Well, what size is the town? How many people live in the town? What's the budget for the entire town? What are those factors? How does that work into it? I mean, it's not, look, I'm telling you, we would love to have that done, all right? Middleton has, how many, how many people live in Middleton? 8,000 people?
We have seven first-grade classes.
We have, we have 27,000 people, okay? We have a budget. If we go up in the budget any more than we do, they're not going to, they're not going to pass our budget, all right? We would love to do, I don't disagree with anything you say about the 15 students, the 15 in the class. We have to work with what we have. And we can't have classes of 15. And we just can't. And you've been lucky to have 15 over the past year or two. No other school has 15. So, yes, in the utopian world, it's great to have 15. And I would love it. But, but the realities of money and budget and what people are going to pay for taxes and how much they're going to allot.
Our taxes are going up and so is our class sizes.
Well, come to, go to the Selectments meeting, go to the FinCom meetings and talk to the people there because that's where the money comes from. I said earlier in this meeting that we have to work with the town. We have to go and take our budget and put it through the Selectment, put it through the FinCom, put it through the Town Meeting. And that's where the money is allotted, not here. We vote on what we have for a budget and we work with the town to try to get something that we will get passed. If we go and say, we want to increase our budget by 12.7% so that we can have all our classrooms with 15 students, which again, I agree, would be a great thing, that is not going to pass, the town is not going to pass that budget.
So if we're going to have large class sizes, can there be aids in those classes?
That's, would be dependent on student need. That's what I was going to ask. If you have 23 students.
Why wouldn't it be dependent on size? Because we look at the, but all kids, all kids need it.
Right, but I assume at 23, you know, you're going to have kids of different abilities that have different needs, some.
So will there be support in those classes?
So, as needed by the, what we see for the student needs and the assessments, I think the other piece is that we can continue, we could have a discussion at another school committee meeting as needed, or again, meetings with any parents to talk about class size, the pieces of it. So the research pieces of it, there will be the research that will talk about that, the report that you referenced. And then there's additional reports that talk about the context of each community and what are the effect sizes for the different class sizes. So that's what we have also been working on. So when you heard earlier in our meeting talking about the fire cycle and the work with formative assessment, all of that work is based on a meta-analysis from John Hattie in looking at it. So teacher collective efficacy, which again, and the SEL, we talked about all working together. When we can all do that as a district, we're moving this forward for all of our students. And that's going to have the higher impact than class size. We can also look at, there's a report from the Department of Education that talks about the resource allocations and how districts are spending their money. So for example, when we spoke about the Student Opportunity Act, although it's a smaller amount for Danvers than it may be for a larger city, we have to talk about how we're doing, how we'll be spending that money. And it needs to be based on research-based, it needs to be based on programs that have been proven to work. So it's not based on lowering a class size for us to use the funding that way. So I think it did definitely what we're talking about now around the research is a bigger discussion that we would love to have with you or a small group of parents to talk more about the different research and the different opportunities that we have. And then, as Mr. Skarmis is talking about, then there's the reality of what our budget is and the decisions that we have made as a district. And putting all those pieces together, it is a range of between 18 to 22, 23 is where we have been staying.
Can I just make another point too about the budget? So this, what we're passing, what we're going to vote on tonight, are we voting tonight?
Oh, not tonight.
What we're going to vote on in March is, is the numbers. Now, as Keith and Lisa both said, that what happens within those numbers often does change during the course of the year. So, you know, I mean, as things are needed, you know, we try to adapt as we can. And so some of the things that, that you're talking about, which are legitimate and valid and important, and I don't, I don't want, I don't want you to think that I don't think that just because I'm talking about ultimately the realities of passing a budget, you know, can, as Lisa said, be talked about in a different setting and to try to work on things that you feel are important to deal with. So it's kind of two different things. The budget is a number and, and the use of the number is, can be, things can be changed as time goes on.
And I think, thank you. And I think, like Caitlin had said, there has been a lot of discussion about what's best for our students, what's best for our kids. To you, they're students, to us, they're our kids. And we wanted you all, we wanted to be here tonight because we wanted you all to know that we know what's going on. Like, we get it. Like, you know what I mean? We want to be involved and we want to be a part of it. So.
So, so we're no different because we all had kids.
Right.
All right? And we have the same concerns, the same issues, the same worries that you guys all did. And, and, you know, now my kids are 19 and 23, so, so, but I remember, I remember when I was, when my oldest daughter was in, going into first grade is when they started the K-1. And I wasn't on school committee then. And I was, you know, I was very concerned about how's this K-1 thing going to work and, you know, what's going to happen and that. And it was a major thing. I get it. And we are, we are you. We just, you know, we're just in a different spot right now. And feel free to run and take over.
And I also just have a question. No, I, I thought about it. But I also have another question. Has there ever been a talk of a cap on the preschool? Because you have to have 51%, 49%. So could you make a prediction of the special ed numbers based on early intervention coming in and then cap the regular ed spots? Because like, and have a lottery, that's what Middleton does, that's what Georgetown does, like.
And we're not to the point where we need a lottery for regular ed spots? We have regular ed spots that if you wanted to apply to come to preschool today.
Right. So that's the issue. I was just curious.
By keeping those ratios of the one-to-one or the eight-to-seven in the classroom of 15, we still have open peer partner slots. We hope to get to where we have a lottery. I live in Tewksbury and they have a lottery and it's the same thing.
Okay, I was just curious about that, if that had ever come up. But it's really that you're trying to meet the numbers of the special ed students.
Correct.
I would just say, if I can, Thorpe School is very special to me. I went to Thorpe, my two daughters went to Thorpe, and my grandson will probably start Thorpe next year. So I plan on being involved and being around and I have, I have no concern about Eli starting there. And I'm about as left as you'll find. I'm not Bernie Sanders left, but I'm pretty liberal. But I have to agree with Arthur, the reality of the, we have roughly 17 or 18% of households that actually have students in the schools. We have a lot of seniors. If you looked at the town's demographics, the two groups that are growing fastest, you know, one of the groups is growing, of the seniors, living on a fixed income in a town that's getting much more expensive with each passing year. So the reality is, we have to try and sort of work all together. And the town's been generous enough to help us with building a middle school, building a high school, building a Smith School. So, you know, the reality is, I'd love, like Arthur, to be, if we could have 15 kids per classroom, that'd be great. But I don't think fiscally we can do it. But what we can do is be aware of what we need.
I didn't expect you to say that, I didn't expect you to say that you could.
I get that. But what we need to do is be able to pay attention to the concerns that parents like you have raised. And, you know, if it's an issue of how are the kids all going to get along, that's something that Rita and her staff, at least for this coming year, are going to have to be concerned about and make it work. And we have made it work in other schools, I think we can do the same. But the best tool Rita may have is you being the eyes and ears for her to help her understand what's happening and help the teachers understand if there are issues that need to be addressed. So you can be your children's best advocate and I kind of feel like you will.
I know. I mean, I think what you're seeing here from, from our parents, from the parents at Thorpe is just, is a reaction to.
Of course.
The change. Because, like, and, and I saw the difference. I was one of the only people who maybe had that unique perspective of seeing the difference. So it's just the change.
We feel you.
Totally understand, I mean.
Absolutely.
I'm thrilled that you guys are here. You know how many meetings we have where there's like two people in the audience and they're administrators, so they have to be here?
Where are the snacks?
It's great to have parent involvement.
Actually, what I, actually I have a comment though. Like Arthur has said, we have to go and defend our budget in front of Selectmen and then FinCom. And we are grilled about this, that. Before I was on school committee, I would go to those meetings. And I sat in the audience one time and a FinCom member said, why are we paying kindergarten teachers the same as the other grades? Okay?
I almost lost my mind, yeah.
Really? I wanted to jump out of my seat because why is a kindergarten teacher different than a third, fourth, second, first and second? And, you know, the understanding that they have is not what we have as parents, what you have. I would strongly suggest, if you have the opportunity to go to these meetings, go, sit in the audience. They do give opportunity for people in the audience if they have comments. It's the best way to advocate for the schools and our budget and so they know what it's like. Because they don't, they don't know what it's like in the schools.
Especially when the school budget is before FinCom. It would be, we would love to have people there.
Yeah.
All right. Hi, I'm Carolyn Wilson and I want to give a different perspective. I am a parent of two Riverside children. I have a first grader and a third grader at Riverside. And I think this is a perfect segue because I really, I guess, want to emphasize the point of having comparable experiences for all of our elementary students. And for me, I have a child in the very large first grade at Riverside. And when I look at these numbers, I think my challenge to the committee and this administrative team is, you're telling me you're monitoring this and my son is in a class where there's 48 students at Riverside in two classes and there are 46 students at Thorpe in three classes. And so to me, it doesn't give me reassurance that you're monitoring it because to see that level of discrepancy, we know that a class, and as these parents are saying, a class of six and seven-year-olds that has 24-plus or minus students, depending on when students are included, which is the model that we have at Riverside, is very different than a class of 15. And I think we just have to be really honest about that. And so my challenge for this committee is that if you really are monitoring these class sizes, then I think it needs to be an ongoing conversation, not just this October 1 data. I think you really need to look hard and fast at these numbers. And I think the concern I have is when I look at the projections for next year, we're not including those special ed numbers. And so we have six additional students at Riverside that are not accounted for in your numbers for next year. And I think that we just need to be honest about who those students are in the classrooms at that time. My other piece around comparability is that Riverside is an amazing school and I am appreciative of this committee acknowledging the challenges we have with space at Riverside. The fact that our fifth graders can't fit in our music room is a problem. The fact that we don't have a maker space like the other elementary schools is a problem. And I'm appreciative that we're looking at that. The other piece I want to acknowledge is that Riverside, as a pre-K to 5 school, our amazing principal manages pre-K to 5. No other principal in this district is managing pre-K to 5. And she is amazing. And if you see Ms. Powers, she is out there at those times when the preschoolers are dropped off midday. But she is our instructional leader. And my children, just like the children in all four other elementaries, deserve an instructional leader to lead the instruction that happens in their curriculum. And so I guess I challenge this group to think about how we are supporting preschool in general. Is it time to look at having an early childhood coordinator or someone who is overseeing that in a different way as an administrator? Because if our priorities are engaged learners, improving in using data, and we need a principal who can do that, and Ms. Powers is amazing. She takes on every challenge with grace and professionalism. She knows every student in that building, she knows the families, and she has made an amazing community there. But I want people to understand, when we talk about having comparable experience, our Riverside experience is different. And we love it and our families love it, but understand that there is additional challenges that come with having a preschool, that I don't know that is really supported at that level. And I think you've addressed the piece in terms of looking at long-term. I just think the concern about the space at Riverside, we have an amazing school and we, our families love it there too and our kids are amazing. And we want them to have the same experience as all four other elementary schools and they should have a maker space. Our kids should have those opportunities. And so that's, I guess, my statement. Thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you.
And be in here until 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Think you have a fan, Violet.
Is there anyone else that would like to get up and speak?
I promise to be short.
That's fine.
So I'm Sophia Stamos. We just moved here last year. So I have a preschooler at Riverside and a first grader at Thorpe. And I just have a clarifying question. So I did overhear a few committee members mention kind of like the, the numbers in terms of how many children per class are like 18 to 23. So if a few more children move to the Thorpe School over the summer, is it possible to consider keeping three second grader, three second grade classrooms? Because right now I'm seeing it as 22 and 22, right? So if a couple more kiddos move in, is it a possibility that we will just need to keep three second grade classrooms for next, next year?
We would, we are going to monitor that through August. We try to look at it by like the first week in August, so if we do need to hire a teacher, we would do that.
I'm also a teacher. So how would parents then be notified? I know in my district, they send letters out at the end of August. That way parents know or the children know who their teacher will be. How are parents, how will parents know?
Very similar way is we try to use our ConnectEd system, the email system, that we would let parents know as soon as a decision was made.
So is that how it works in Danvers as well? Is in August, parents and children know?
They're.
In June on the report.
On June in the report card, they know who their teacher is. If there's any changes over the summer, a teacher may leave over the summer, we need to make announcements of any changes.
Or a classroom may need to be added and then.
Right. Any changes within the school are announced in August.
So kind of 18 to 23 is kind of the, what you, what you look for in terms of class size? So there is a possibility that if the numbers increase over the summer, that we will need to keep three? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mayra, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just looking at these numbers and this is the October enrollment numbers, right? October 1st?
Yes, and then we do keep it updated on a monthly basis.
Could we get that when, you know, when it's budget time? Can we get the October 1st number and then the?
The actual for this.
Day of number or, you know, month of number? So we know, you know, because there are obviously move-ins and moves-out, move-out throughout the year. And I just want to make sure we're looking at the most accurate information.
Great, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Sarah O'Brien. I have three big and little ones, a fifth grader moving into the middle school next year, a third grader and an incoming kindergartner into Smith. And I just wanted to address the numbers a little bit more specifically when it comes to Smith. My daughter in third grade, she has 25 students in her class. And I know the other third grade classroom also has 25. And just echoing what Kristin said, it's, you know, we all know at Smith, it's very crowded. So I think a lot of parents there are just like, you know what, it's going to get better. We're going to get more space. And I know the other third grade classroom also has 25. And just echoing what Kristin said, it's, you know, we all know at Smith, it's very crowded. So I think a lot of parents there are just like, you know what? It's going to get better. We're going to get more space. And I think I just want to hear a little reassurance that, let's say, when my daughter goes into fifth grade and she's still sitting at 25, possibly more students at that year, are we going to look at possibly getting to three classrooms when we do have more space at Smith?
So Keith, you want to take that? Because Smith will be with four classrooms at each grade level.
Right. So where she, she'll be in fifth grade, let's say hypothetically, when it opens. So right now, where she's sitting at two classrooms, at a very large number at 25 and 25, would it be a possibility to open that up and give smaller class sizes when we actually have the space?
So we would, we look at the enrollments, yes.
Okay.
Right. We look at it every year and what the student profile is and what the student needs are. So we would review it once there was space.
Okay.
Right, right now we're going, how do we?
Okay, good. Because I think, I, I learned a lot tonight and I thank you all for the information. And I think in my mind, I was thinking it was a more of a space issue. But I'm also learning that it's about enrollment as well. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to, trying to tease that out.
It's a culmination, yes.
And also in terms of the preschool, that was also new to me tonight. And I would just maybe encourage the committee or the superintendent to just maybe communicate with the Smith families that preschool is an option there. And I don't know, I might have just been out of the loop. But I think it's an exciting possibility, but something that would be, you know, wanting, people would want to hear more about that.
And maybe to clarify, it's not, it's not in the plans at the moment, so how we make additional space. So when opening the work for Smith School, we always look at everything as a district. So we looked at with MSBA as a district and what would need to happen. So that's why that school is not built just for that neighborhood, but it's going to be for 465 students or more there. So flex zones help to move students around to have that space. It also allowed us to build the school with additional spaces for some of our specialized programs in special ed.
Okay.
So when we move them out of current, one of the other four elementary schools, that's going to open up space in our other elementary schools.
Okay. So you're not saying that the preschool is definitely going to Smith?
Right. No, that's not.
In 2020. Okay.
Right. Going back to any of the Smith School building meetings so far that hasn't been part of it. It opens up classrooms, which could allow additional preschool classrooms in one of the other buildings. But again, not until we get in there and start using that building, then things may shift over time. But.
Okay. No, that makes sense. Good. That clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Anyone else? Do want to say, if you have any other questions or anyone else has any questions after tonight's meeting, please feel free to reach out to your principals, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, any one of us. But definitely, and the budget's also online. But certainly, anyone can answer questions. And if they can't, they can get the answer for you. But I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Thank you for your concerns. And we definitely, we totally understand the concerns. And certainly as a committee, we'll be staying on top of it and looking at it. And again, maybe down the road, having the conversations about class size and further discussions. So, thank you.
So yes, the transition time, school committee does have a couple more business items to vote on, but we understand now it's 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Let's speed through the last part.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Going to Arthur.
Arthur.
One thing we could do.
Just passing along the message.
Vote on what we need.
Thank you very much.
Save the subcommittee.
Thank you.
We don't do anything. We vote next time. We have to vote on.
Yeah.
Field trips.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Everything else we couldn't.
No.
Thank you very much.
Great, great.
Unfinished business.
Thank you. Unfinished business. We have our Holton Richmond Program of Studies for a second reading. The superintendent recommends the HRMS Program of Studies for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Quite the crew we have left.
Any conversations? Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the Holton Richmond Program of, Program of Studies? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Thank you. Our high school Program of Studies for a second reading. The superintendent recommends the DHS Program of Studies for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Danvers?
You? Oh, we're, um, yes. You can head off now too. Thank you.
Thank you guys for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a food truck out front.
Yeah. Breakfast tacos at this hour.
Exactly.
I can't even see you behind the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
We have two items for new business. Our fundraising request. The superintendent recommends the approval of fundraising events for boys and girls, winter track boosters, class of 2021 and 2022 for the Powderpuff Game. DHS Girls Tennis Boosters, DHS Football Boosters, the class of 2020. DHS Boys Lacrosse, DHS Softball Boosters, and the DHS Mock Trial Team.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Thank you. And they are grateful. You could see that they were piling up for fundraising requests that we were meeting later in February. Our out of overnight and out of state field trip requests. The superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight out of state field trip requests for DHS Corus to Boston, March 5th through the 7th, 2020. DHS to Germany, Austria and Italy for February vacation 2021. DHS to Rome and Greece, February vacation of 2021. Our Holton Richmond Grade Eight students to Washington DC, June 9th through the 12th, 2020. And our Smith School kindergarten to Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, just a quick question. I didn't see this on here. Why are the kindergartners going to Portsmouth?
Because it's out of state. And let's, we just put that one in. We found that one.
I was just wondering why they were going. I'm guessing a play or something?
Let's just do it.
Oh, here I see it.
Yes, the Seacoast.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Order of business.
Great. So under communications, our North Shore Ed Consortium, we're working on also our FY21 budget. And we also are making a couple amendments to our co-consortium agreement. So we'll be bringing that to you at the March and April meeting.
Thank you. Legislation. Eric?
I had the chance to communicate with Representative Billy Otis's office today. And he points out that the legislature will be taking up the budget almost immediately. And so their work begins just as ours did. And that's where he's at. We talked a little bit earlier about what is projected for the Chapter 70 or whatnot. But it's budget time for them too.
Great. Thank you. C. DEEP. DEEP held its 11th Annual Holton Richmond Spelling Bee back in January. Our winner was Kelly Hunn? And she, they went quite a few rounds. She moves on to qualify for the Regional Spelling Bee. DEEP will be holding its monthly meeting, March 11th, at the Riverside School. We'll be looking at the DEEP grant, the sensory hallway and the maker space there. Everyone is invited to attend. Also, just wanted to put out there that tomorrow here at Danvers High School, Credit for Life will be happening. Thank you to First Ipswich, now known as Brookline Bank, for sponsoring that again. And we have some DECA students that are helping to coordinate that Credit for Life Fair this year.
I'll be at the housing table.
Oh, good. Yes, if anyone is able to volunteer, they're still looking for some volunteers. So you can just come. What time do you have to be here, Arthur?
A quarter to nine.
All right. Danvers Cares?
Danvers Cares, the yearly publication for the Teen Health and Safety Guide is coming out soon. Are we still accepting applications for advertisements?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So we're still accepting applications? We always are, which would be awesome. And the other quick thing is community Narcan distribution. So anyone interested in carrying Narcan should contact Judith Ryan to set up an appointment for training. She's pretty flexible, has a lot of time available for that. And then once you're trained, you can get that.
You get it for free.
You get it for free?
Get it for free. And it lasts, I think it's expiration of a year, year and a half or so. So.
Is it a limited number of how many they're handing out or training?
First come, first served. So I don't know what the, the grant provided through the police as well as Danvers Cares, but.
Seems like a pretty good supply though.
Yeah, it's a good number.
Is through the public health nurse?
Correct.
At Town Hall? Do they contact Town Hall, Department of Health or?
Senior Center.
Who do they contact?
Judith Ryan.
Judith Ryan.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. CPAC? Any update?
No.
Uh, policy?
I can't remember. Did we have a meeting since our last?
No, we did.
It was so long ago.
We did.
Can't remember if we already talked about it.
We met in January and working on the superintendent's evaluation wellness, some of the MASC policies we were working on. And we're meeting this Friday also.
That's right. We're having another meeting. That's right.
We're meeting this Friday.
Now I remember.
Yes.
Good answer.
More information next month.
They're going to start their week with us and finish their week with us.
We'll have four first readings next month, potentially.
Good job, guys. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. Eric?
The February meeting is actually this Thursday, the 27th, at 7:00 at the, I believe it's the police station conference room.
Excellent. Thank you. Great job with the MLK event as well.
That was terrific.
At Danvers High. So very good. Minutes?
I, Madam Chair, I move that we approve and release the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 regular meeting, and that we approve and not release the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Budget?
The monthly budget report for January, our special education number is holding where it was before. So we look like we're in relatively okay shape, all things being told.
Thank you. Personnel?
Appointments. The main highlight is the addition of the Learning Center class at Riverside that started after break during the month of January.
All right. Anything else from the committee? No? Our next meeting?
March 9.
March 9.
A week.
All right.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right. Thank you and good night, Danvers.
Thank you very much.